There's someone else here if you can hear me. I've got one affirmation from someone else on Zoom that you are inaudible and HW Cam is not working.
It's trying to come through the computer. How well is your computer? It's almost like my computer is not working.
So I'm sorry, say that one. Put the mic towards your speaker.
Put that right at your microphone.
Nobody seems to have their Zoom on at the school.
No, we do.
Thank you to those answering me to helping me affirm that it's not just me.
We can only hope we can.
I think your microphone is the live one, so.
I guess it was a lot better when we were just on Zoom. Some of those silver linings to COVID. So we don't go onto HW Cam on cable. We go right onto a computer and just go on hwcam.org and we can't get it in at all.
Let me, let's.
Oh, so your mic isn't working. Can you just type in the chat for her to speak because we can hear her?
Hi Pam. So we're going to put the mic on the computer so we should be able to hear you. So you are ready to share your public comment.
Thanks Superintendent Vanos. I appreciate it. It'd also be really helpful if someone can affirm that there is actual, you know, we can't. This should be somewhat of an ability to see. I can't see anybody. You don't have your camera on. Generally, I would have been there. I couldn't. And HW Cam's still not working via hwcam.org. Nonetheless, I'll begin.
Do you have confirmation from Todd that it is working?
This is one of the things you've heard from me multiple times. I have spoken at school committee. Yes, my name is Pamela Millman. I live at 135 Wenston in Peabody, Massachusetts. And I have spoken to this school committee multiple times. I have sent emails. This is fun. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Keep going.
Okay. I sent emails at least about two actions that happened with my family. But it seems like you still have yet to address the multitude of issues. And since you haven't addressed the multitude of issues of the past, and I'm hoping that you would continue further, but since you haven't, I want to draw your attention to the calendar that you put up as an exhibit. Since you've minimized the impact of the implicit bias and the outward blatant disregard to the multiple victims of the school district's exclusivity and lack of its understanding of its impact on top of latent actions of addressing the multitude of issues surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion, I would like to draw your attention to the calendar that you have put on for exhibit for the 2122 school year. There is no time like the present to begin to recognize and address the implicit bias issues that you have within the district. And some of them are fairly simple while others are not. That calendar is still incredibly biased and problematic. The issue here is so in your face to us and our family, and you know and you have yet to look at this and see it when you can still consider a Christian religious, non-federal holiday a vacation day and state it as such. I know you voted on this earlier, although I also know that you've recognized the importance on revisiting votes. This is a good time to make that recognition. You don't need to wait for your expert facilitator to recognize these kinds of issues. You don't need to wait to address these issues when they're brought to your attention. You don't need to wait for someone to tell you what you're doing is hurtful. You don't need to wait to address the issues of understanding that that exclusivity, that bias is problematic. I implore you to take this great opportunity and make a change and make a change tonight when you visit that calendar. Once again, it'll be an opportunity lost. I have yet to hear from a multitude of members, and maybe you will not ever respond, but about how my family was a victim of your implicit, of your outward and your open bias and exclusivity that you have yet to address. I have not much more to say, but I hope you consider that. And if you can please make sure that your HW Cam programming is working there so that your open meeting is really open. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
If she wants to go to Hamilton Wenham Regional Schools on YouTube, it's in the livestream up right now, then that's where it's at.
Great. Thank you. Just for clarification for anybody on Zoom, if you want to go to the Hamilton Regional School District, the live YouTube channel is up and running, and you can access the meeting at that location as well.
All right. Hello, live audience. Most of you are here to be recognized.
Kristen Crockett, you are up and ready to speak.
Great. Can you hear me?
We can, yep.
Okay, great. I do typically try to go to the meetings, but I have been working at a COVID vaccination clinic. It was great to see a lot of Hamilton Wenham students come, so I'm looking forward to getting back to normal. I just want to take a moment. I was really disappointed in the vote to not bring foreign language back to the sixth grade. And going into the last meeting, I, we are a Mandarin family, disappointed that the recommendation is to get rid of them, but it did make sense, and Kevin Sano's presentation was very well done. I wish that you guys did bring in foreign language, but since you haven't done that, I am asking and begging you to look at what has taken place in lieu of sixth grade foreign language. My daughter was fully remote. She has been in three different sixth grade academies. She watches movies while doing classwork. This is such a missed opportunity. I've checked with other students, other families who have different teachers. There's no curriculum being provided. And if we're not going to give our students the benefit of a world language, we at least need to give them something that's educational. I don't know how sitting and having another free period to do homework even counts as minutes in learning, but this is an opportunity to teach our kids how to organize, to teach our kids how to take notes or the Cornell method, something along those lines, or do projects, teamwork, team building, you know, work on current events. Just sitting in a classroom and doing paperwork isn't enough. That's all I have to say on it. I hope you guys look at that for next year in the absence of foreign language.
Thank you, Kristen.
Is that it?
I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom.
Super. Great. I'm just checking studio audience here. Okay. So that would be the end of public comment.
And so at this point, we are going to close down the Zoom link. Again, this is available on HW Cam and live on Hamilton Wenham Regional School District YouTube for folks that want to continue watching in the virtual environment. Thank you for those folks that logged in for Zoom. And again, we're going to redirect you to those two options.
Okay. So first order of business is to remind everyone of your civic opportunity tomorrow to vote. There is an election in both towns, and included in that would be the election for members of the school committee. And this year, Peter Wolzik has decided that his retirement would be imminent, and he's giving the opportunity for other people to run and be on the committee. So we wanted to thank him for his time.
Not necessary, but thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
What?
Did you want an opportunity to say anything?
No, no. I really, I really didn't want to draw any attention to, you know, my rather undistinguished career on the school committee where I felt like I was a largely ignored voice that failed on all accounts to convince people of my vision for the district. I really did try to work hard for students, for teachers, for taxpayers. I had a vision. I do have a vision for the district to break out of this 100-year-old model of education, to bring in a learning management system that would help students and teachers thrive. I wanted to bring language K through 12. I just feel like I failed on all accounts, and I think my time is best served rallying parents because I noticed parents, the school committee listens to parents. So if I can rally parents to convince the school committee to listen, I think my time is best served doing that. So yeah, I didn't want to draw any attention to a rather undistinguished career on the school committee.
Well, we look forward to seeing you on that. Next thing we have is the history. It says history projects, but it's the.
I think Anna. I don't know what.
Oh, so if you don't push.
Oh, it works.
It works. When you push and the green light goes off, you're muted. Yeah.
Okay. I think Anna had her hand raised. Sorry.
I just wanted to say to Peter, thank you for your service. And as a newer member of the committee, I applaud anyone who has the stamina to do this for years upon years. And I guess I just, before we move on, having heard your somewhat heartbreaking comments, I feel like it's appropriate for us to give Peter a round of applause and say thank you.
Honest to God, I did this for my daughter, and I found at the end of three years, all it did was take hundreds of hours away from my daughter.
I have heard that from a school committee members before.
Peter, I just want to add real quickly that, you know, I think that you took on an extremely tough job during an incredibly challenging time. And while I understand where your sentiment is coming from, that you feel that, you know, you haven't done much because you have so many visions for the district, you know, I want to say that I really hope in the next couple of years, you start seeing the seeds you planted start to bloom, because I really do think you made a tremendous difference on this committee over the past three years, and it was an honor serving with you, so.
I appreciate that. I really do hope as a committee and as a community, we can have a, we can start creating a vision for our district. I just think we lack a vision right now. We don't. It's hard to go anywhere if we don't have a vision of where we want to be, what we want for our students and our teachers.
I said one last quick thing. I remember when we had first moved here and you were going and getting signatures and you came to our house, and I thought, why would anyone want to do that? What is, what is going on?
Do you have the answer? Do you have the answer?
So you've served as an inspiration to me, and I really believe you've served as an inspiration to your daughter. And our whole street, our neighborhood, anytime you lend your voice and anytime you speak up for what you believe in, you can't, you can't think that it went into a void and you can't think that it didn't make a difference. I mean, people heard you, people respect you. I think that you probably made a bigger difference than you realized, so thank you.
Thank you. That's kind. Thank you.
I could just also echo some of the sentiments that have been heard. Three years of service is significant. You, you know, you have been at every meeting, at subcommittee meetings, and I would reinforce what I've heard others say, that I would not sell yourself short in terms of the impact that you've had on this district. And thank you for your service to the folks of Hamilton and Wenham.
Thank you. I just set high standards for myself, and I found I failed on all accounts.
Well, when you set your standards high, you always reach higher. So Hamilton Wenham has a long history of participating in the history fair. We have a long history of doing well in the history fair. And this year, we are not alone. And is Ms. Borges here? Okay, so I thought that was you, but I wasn't here. And so this has been going on for a long time. Kevin O'Reilly, Mrs. Borges stepped in. You know, people were concerned, wow, will we be able to still be great? And the truth is, is it's not about the person who's leading it. It's about the team effort. And she's going to present all of the wonderful projects that have placed with the state and also some of our students that are going on to nationals.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Social Studies Department, we too would like to thank Peter for his service to our district and also his continued support of the Regional School District's History Fair program. So you've always been one of our biggest advocates, and you've also been one of our judges at our, at a number of our public showcases. National History Day is a year-long academic program focused on historical research, interpretation, and creative expression for sixth through 12th grade students. And by participating in National History Day, students become writers, filmmakers, web designers, playwrights, and artists as they create unique contemporary expressions of history. Every year, more than half a million students nationwide participate in National History Day. In Massachusetts alone, over 6,000 students participate from districts across the Commonwealth. The experience culminates in a series of contests at the local and affiliate levels and an annual national competition in the nation's capital in June. Our students began their journey in last September by choosing a research topic that connected to this year's theme, communication and history. In a typical year, the Regional High School Social Studies Department hosts a public showcase of all the participants' projects in December, where community members provide feedback for students. Students use this feedback to ready their projects for the next level in the Massachusetts State Competition. And due to the uniqueness of the school year, we were unable to host this community-wide event this year. And we would like to thank the many community judges who have also included school committee members of the past, who come out year after year to help us evaluate the projects, and we hope to return to that next fall. For the second year, our students have been asked to conduct research in the middle of a global pandemic and faced restricted access to historical archives and libraries. Including social distancing requirements forced them to be creative in ways that they communicate their findings with each other and collaborated with their groups. All participants truly embraced this year's National History Day theme, communication and history, as they navigated these obstacles. This year, students prepared their projects for two rounds at the state competition, and the top two projects in each category will represent the state of Massachusetts at the national contest this June. Traditionally, this contest is held annually at the University of Maryland at College Park, and it's usually the second week of June where students from around the world, and I mean around the world, they compete against students from American schools that are abroad as well as students in the American territories. They come to Washington DC to gather and present their historical research projects. Due to the pandemic, the 2021 contest will again be held virtually June 13th through the 19th this, this coming summer. The Social Studies Department is proud to announce that we have three projects representing Massachusetts and advancing to the national contest. And I am happy to present our national finalists to you tonight. In the individual website category, 10th grader Olivia Sulman earned a second place medal with her project, Strength in Silence: How Persistent Nonviolent Protests Won Women's Suffrage. Olivia, could you come forward, please? I've asked each project to just give you a quick overview of their research.
Yeah, thank you for inviting me here tonight. So Ms. Borges just said the title of my project. It's focused on the peaceful yet confrontational and determined communication strategies of the National Women's Party during their 1917 and 1918 silent sentinel protest outside the White House. These protests ultimately led to the passage of the 19th Amendment. My website also goes into detail about the early suffrage movement in the 1800s, the anti-suffrage movement, Alice Paul, World War I, the imprisonment of suffragists, and the lasting effects of the suffrage movement that are still present today. So, yeah.
Thank you, Olivia. And the school committee has, as well as the public, has access to be able to view these projects because I've linked them on the exhibit. In the group documentary category, we have 11th graders Seamus Haney, Leo Kagan, Micah Katz, Colin Leary, and Eli Malloy, who earned a second place medal with their project, Anti-Japanese Propaganda, during World War II.
Hi, I'm Leo. This is Colin. And Eli, Micah, and Seamus were not able to be here tonight. Our project is called Brainwashing America. It's about World War II propaganda, specifically anti-Japanese propaganda. Our project was focused on the impact that propaganda had on the American public, really mostly about how it intensified the existing anti-Japanese sentiment that was in the United States following the attack on Pearl Harbor, and how that resulted in the incarceration of over 120,000 Japanese-American citizens and the long-term economic and psychological effects of that incarceration.
Thank you. And then our last national finalist group. These young women ended up placing first in the group documentary category. 11th graders Maggie Ferricano, Gianna Randazzo, and Bridget Rorstall, in their project, The Greensboro Sit-in: Standing Up by Sitting Down.
Come on up, Gianna.
Hi, everyone. My name is Gianna Randazzo. This is Maggie and Bridget. First, I'd just like to thank the school committee for inviting us all to come and talk about our projects tonight. I'd also like to thank Ms. Borges, along with the entire history department, especially our teacher, Mr. Knates, for helping to guide us through the entire process of creating an NHD project. Our group decided to do a group documentary, which was about four African-American college students that helped to kickstart student sit-ins during the civil rights movement. And these students demonstrated the power and impact that nonverbal and symbolic communication can have as their use of nonviolent protest helped to communicate a powerful message of courage while exposing racism. And this subsequently impacted the entire civil rights movement as students throughout the South and later in the North helped to join their fight to communicate their dissent towards racism and segregation in Southern society.
And I know that these are history projects, but as you can tell, they are so relevant still today. I also need to recognize the many special prizes earned by the state, at the state competition by students who are not present tonight, but certainly deserve our recognition. Two of our projects were chosen to be part of the Massachusetts Historical Society Juneteenth exhibit this summer. Jay McGuire, Riley Clark, Jesse Cooper, Jackie Chapdolane, they should be recognized for their website, Little Rock Nine: The Face of Racism Nationally Exposed. And again, another honor for Maggie, Gianna, and Bridget. Their Greensboro documentary will also be part of that exhibit. For Best Project in Indigenous History, awarded by the Plymouth Patuxet Museums, went to Mina Gurley for her website, Unbreakable: How the Navajo Code Talkers Answered Their Nation's Call to Win the War. For Best Project in STEM History, awarded by the Metropolitan Waterworks Museum, that went to Ariel Greenberg for her website, Code Girls of World War II: Communicating Secret Codes. And for Best Use of Primary Sources, awarded by the Peabody Museum of Archaeology and Ethnology at Harvard University, Lily Glass for her website, Roosevelt Amure in Yosemite: The Camping Trip That Changed Conservation. I must also recognize one last group. This year, Hamilton Wenham students swept the group documentary category. Not only did our students earn first and second prize, and they were advanced to the national contest, but the honorable mention in that category was also earned by Hamilton Wenham's high school students as well. 11th graders Ian Castracane, Leo Greco, Ryan Lor, and Luke McMahon received honorable mention for their documentary, Untying the Knot of War: The Cuban Missile Crisis. And I especially want to recognize this group because last year, as sophomores, they too were national finalists, and they placed third in the nation for their documentary about President Nixon's 1972 visit to China. Quite an accomplishment, and I think with all that was going on at the end of the year last year with the pandemic, we didn't give them the recognition that they need. Finally, a very special thank you to all of the teachers who have guided our students throughout the entire research process. Brett Burnett, Johann Knates, and Ann Page. Their professionalism and commitment to our students is an asset to our district and the reason that this program is so successful. Thank you for having us tonight.
Dana, do you want to take seat or do you just?
Yeah, I can do that. If I may, I just, since I got to speak, I just want to say thank you so much, Ms. Borges, and to all of you, thank you so much. And I loved that they were all on the exhibit, and we did get to see them and appreciate them, and the work is at a professional level. It's just stunning and, and so impressive. And thank you all for doing it and sharing it with us, so.
And we should say, you are all welcome to stay and watch history in the making. However, it probably will not make the same impact that your projects have, and if you need to leave, feel free.
Thank you. So I don't know if you want me to make the motion or just explain where we are with the calendar.
Why don't you make the motion and then explain? Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Check me on this if I get the motion right. So I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee amend the approved 2021-2020 school calendar so that the first student day of school would be September 1st, 2021.
Is there a second for that?
A second?
Second by Michelle Horgan.
Point of order. If I want to make a motion to amend, should I do that now or should I do that later?
I think you should let Dana explain why we're doing this.
Okay. Because I think they're going to be for different purposes, I think.
Okay. So before we do, I just want, I would like to make a motion to amend.
Okay. So my, what I'd like to just bring forward is why I'm bringing this forward to you. This calendar was originally approved on December 18th, 2019. So typically calendars are approved, you know, well in advance. So in, we have heard, we have met with the HWEA, with the union, and we have heard, they have shared with us a concern regarding the early start date. If you look on the calendar right now, the early, the date, the teachers would actually be returning on this calendar is the 23rd of August. And we listened to them, and they shared with us how important it was to, and it is true that that's quite early. That's much earlier than many years. Part of it just has to do with the way the calendar falls. And so after listening carefully to them, we agreed to bring that to you for your consideration. The one thing that you should know is that if you look at the end of the school year, so June 20, June 2022, if you look right now on the calendar, the last day with no snow days is current, would currently be the 10th of June. In this new revised calendar, the last day with no snow days would be the 17th of June. If there were five snow days, you need to be mindful of the, of the fact that due to the new Juneteenth holiday, the final possible day is actually Monday, June 27th. The, so that's, I don't know if I need to say more, but that's, that's how we got to be in this place, and it is out of listening to our teachers, that that is what they are hoping for this change.
And I think we need to mention the MOU is necessary.
That, oh, yes. I'm sorry, yes. So I don't know how much, if we, maybe you say it so that I don't say it wrong.
So if we were to make this change, it will cause the teaching staff not to be paid for one week. They're week, they would be one week delayed. So many teachers choose to get paid on a regular basis throughout the school year. But because moving this back, their contract only allows them to be paid on the first Friday after school starts. So there will be a pay period, then there will be three weeks until the next pay period. So every teacher will miss a paycheck essentially. They won't lose the money. It's just that because of the way the weeks fall, they won't get a paycheck in that week. So we will need, if, if we make this change, we will need to have an agreement with the teachers' union that they understand that that will happen.
I think it's important to note that they're not losing a check.
They're not. They're not losing pay.
The pay periods are realigning, and there's a longer distance between the last paid period of one year and the first paid period of another year.
Exactly. And can I just add one more thing, which is, we would, we would need to create a formal MOU with the teachers. However, in an informal way, the teachers are aware that it would just be the, and just to clarify what David just said, it's really just a shifting, nobody is losing any, overall, they're going to make, they're not losing salary, but it is a shifting, and the teachers are aware, and they, they have, so there would need to be an MOU, but, yeah, they are aware of that, so.
And Vinnie, can you clarify for us if there's cost to the extra payroll that would be run for?
Yep, that's what I was going to mention. So, this also changes the payroll for all fiscal year employees as well. So because the teachers will skip a week, we have to then divide all the fiscal year employees by 27 payrolls instead of their normal 26. So if, the way you look at it from one year to the next, they, their bi-weekly pay might actually decrease a little bit, but it's just because it's spread over one extra payroll. So that will affect all administrators, all fiscal year office personnel, and all custodians, pretty much anyone that works the entire fiscal year.
But, but again, everyone still is going to get the same amount of money, it's just, at the end of the year, everyone is still getting the same salary, it's just.
Exactly. So, all right.
Yeah, oh, can we, can we say, and we should reiterate, this was approached to us by the union, this is not us.
Correct.
Forcing it on anybody.
Correct.
It was brought to us.
Yes, it's us listening to the request that the teachers are making.
Exactly.
Yes.
Anna?
I would like to make a motion to amend the prior motion. I would like to remove the distinction of Good Friday as a vacation day, to treat it as a regular school day, thereby changing the last possible date from the 185 instead of being June 27, to move it back to June 24.
So, I am going to say, if, if we do that, and this motion passes, we will not be able to vote on this calendar tonight, because one of the reasons we are considering this is that the union needs to be consulted prior to a calendar change. So if that is the will of the committee, to accept that motion, I will need to ask that we lay it on the table tonight, so.
I, I second the motion.
Great.
I, I think we've discussed it enough with regards to, you know, I'd like to think our new focus on, you know, diversity and inclusion in our district, we can't stop kicking this can down the road, as well as the fact that, you know, the simple math is, vacations are placed where they are, so you can use the minimum amount of days. They're always put after a holiday, right? So you're only using four days in the week instead of five. The fact that we're putting a vacation day before the holiday makes absolutely no sense. Like, why it's gone on this long, just from a logistical standpoint, makes no sense, so.
This might be a point of order, I don't, I don't, now that there's a motion and a second, that, now it's, it's just one thing, up or down?
Now, I am going to suggest that we lay it on the table, because as you are aware, calendar needs to be consulted with the union, so. That is not debatable, so I'm going to ask that we vote on whether or not to lay this on the table.
So, there's three, there's three things, three things that are happening now, right?
So right now?
The motion, the amendment, and you asking to lay it on the table.
Correct.
And we're talking about April 15?
Correct.
And if we vote on Ms. Seizic's motion that we don't make it, label it a vacation day, we, it doesn't go into a, what happens if we say yes? We still have to go to the union, right? We still have to.
The union could file a grievance, because they were not consulted prior to a setting of the schedule.
They could file a grievance, because they weren't consulted, I see.
Correct. So, there is no debate on a motion to table, so we should vote to whether or not to table.
I, I have a point of order, just clarifying question. If we lay it on the table without determining how the committee overall feels about it, is there any merit to taking a vote on the amended motion, with the understanding that it is not binding until we hear back from the teachers and we vote again? Because right now, we haven't taken the pulse of the committee at all, as to whether or not people actually support the amended motion.
I also feel like it is somewhat in violation of our, whatever, I don't want to use the word duty, because it's not a duty, but it isn't transparent to the public that that was something we would be voting on tonight. So if someone did not agree with this decision, they didn't have the opportunity to come and speak.
I'm actually going to, I'm going to disagree with you on that, only because we actually had a comment from the public, unsolicited, about this very topic, right? So it's, it's something that we've spoken about before, and pushed on the road, and we're sort of doing that again. And I think that's sort of, it's just time to, time to, you know, talk that, have that discussion.
I would say on the agenda, it says vote on the calendar.
Right, but it doesn't say that we are going to vote on a calendar that's different than what's in the exhibits.
Okay.
So, if someone had an opinion that that was not what they wanted, they did not have the opportunity to come and speak, because they had, were unaware that that was a possibility. So I'm happy for us to now vote on whether or not to table this, until such time as we can, one, give the public notice, and two, have a consultation with the union. So, all in favor, raise your hand.
A favor of what?
I couldn't hear, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Oh, sorry. So we are now voting on whether or not to table this motion to the next meeting. Go ahead, ask your question.
Well, I just, is there, I guess I just, procedurally, is there, there's no way for me to make a motion to separate these two items?
You could absolutely do that.
Oh, well, I thought I asked that already.
I mean, but.
Can, can, can I do that?
I guess I will rescind my motion to the table.
All right. I move that we separate the two calendar questions and vote on them separately.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Second by Michelle Horgan.
I can see the value in this, especially where we have to go back and ask the teachers, right, the HWEA, the fact that we're actually agreeing to what they asked us, I think is a sign of good faith, so.
And I would also say that I do think there's merit in the committee taking a position, understanding that. I would also say, to David's point, we've heard from not only members of the public, but I myself have raised this at least two or three times. I think every time we've talked about the calendar, I have raised the Good Friday element is, it's discriminatory on its face. So I don't think this is totally unsurprising, but I do see Michelle's point, that it's a change that the public wasn't necessarily aware of. But I do think the committee should make a decision and express an opinion about whether or not we want to make Good Friday as a vacation day or not.
I think I know how to do that.
Okay, so, let's vote on whether or not we want to change the first day of school.
I think we, actually think we didn't vote on whether to separate.
Yeah, so let's vote on whether or not we're going to vote tonight. So if we've passed this, then we will be voting on two motions, potentially. So if you would like to vote separately, the change in the first day of school and the change from the change regarding April something?
15.
15. If you are in favor of that, raise your hand. There's no need to call for opposed, because it is unanimous. Okay. So, Dana, which motion would you like to take up first?
I'd like to take up the first day of school vote, and I move to vote.
Great. So, if you vote yes, you are moving the first day of school for staff members to August 30, and the first day for students to September 1. If you are in favor of that, raise your hand. Okay, there's no need to call for opposed, because that is unanimous. Okay, so then we were separating two votes, we have a motion to remove the vacation day on April the 15. And then there is a motion to table that motion. So we are going to move, we are going to vote on whether or not to table that motion. That is not debatable. If you are in favor of tabling the motion to our next meeting, raise your hand. That is four. If you are opposed to tabling the motion to our next meeting, raise your hand. That is three. So we will table that motion to our next meeting. Can you write that down somewhere?
Michelle?
Yep.
Is there, is there, I don't know how to ask this, but is there, was there in that an instruction to the committee to, to, between now and then, consult with the teachers' union?
That was my question.
I believe that is the superintendent's responsibility.
Okay, but I just wanted, but that's a direction from the committee that we would, okay.
And they watch, so just give us a call.
Okay, and I would just say, if people have comment about that, either in support of or against, they should.
Yeah, they should.
Have a public comment at the next meeting.
Come to public comment, or send us an email, because we do read your emails, even if they sometimes come in at 6:30 at night.
Shall just clarify, then, will we take a final vote on my original motion to undesignate Good Friday at the meeting on the 19th, once everyone's had a chance to be consulted and properly noticed?
That's my expectation, yeah.
Yeah, and what I'll be able to do is to share the perspective of the HWEA when you bring this back for a vote at your next meeting.
Yep, okay, great. Okay, so, we're not too far off, we're five minutes late. We are now going to discuss district goals. One of the things that is challenging is having a shared vision. When we have a shared vision, it allows us to focus on those things. It also allows us to know what kinds of things we should be looking out for. So, Mary Beth is, you know, been here some time, seen some of the things that are going on, and is, I guess, going to propose some ideas to see if this is the direction that we want to go in, before she develops full goals for that.
Thank you, Michelle. And the draft district goals are linked on the agenda, and I am just going to try to enter full screen here. And I will talk these through. So as you indicated, we've been working on the draft district goals. These goals have been crafted with work with the leadership team. So that is Principal Eric Tracy, Assistant Principal Brian Menegony, Craig Hovey, Liz Lovell, Jen Clifford, Carolyn Chidiak, Ben Sherston, Stacy Busek, who is our Special Ed Director, Kristin Lazaroe, who is our K through 12 Counseling Director, Tom Gary, and Vinnie Leoni. So we have now spent two meetings, really trying to work through these, and to bring to you where we see the next level of work needing to be done in the district. These goals have a lot of significance, in the sense that they, they help inform the work plan for the board going forward, where we would be coming back to you and reporting progress on these goals, so that's an important piece. They help to also drive budget decisions, so that is another reason for this work. And what we would also envision is that these district goals lead to the formation of the superintendent's goals, and administrator's goals, and teacher goals. So it has a big impact in terms of where the district is headed in the next year. So with that, let me just kind of scroll down. The first goal is following up on a goal that exists for this year, continuing our efforts to build a strong district vision for student outcomes when they graduate. And we have been referring to that as a portrait of a graduate. So that visioning process, you have voted to support and will begin this fall. So that is the first part of this goal, is to build out that portrait of a graduate. You can see in our action steps that we are targeting December 2021 to bring forward a consensus portrait of a graduate to the committee for a formal vote. And once that portrait of a graduate is finalized, we have a North Star in terms of the vision for the district, then the district would immediately move into strategic planning, mapping out the, the critical steps to realize that vision and a five-year plan. One of the things that is noted in terms of launching the strategic plan, and appreciate Anna Seizic for reminding and recognizing that we need to be sure that the strategic planning is done in collaboration with, and in alignment with, the town, town master planning efforts, so that all three entities, Hamilton, Wenham, and the school district, are planning strategically together. So that, that is something that we would be sure to be looking at, and that, again, the target date here is June 2022, to bring a strategic plan, a final strategic plan to the full board. So that is the, the first goal that we are bringing forward to you. Would it be helpful for me to go through all four, or do you want to stop after each one and ask questions?
Do they, do you feel like they fit together?
There are a lot of things that do fit together. So with your permission, I'll just keep going.
Let me go through it, yep.
So the next goal, we, we really gave a lot of thought to how to best structure this, and we ended up with a model that we have two improvement of teaching and learning goals, one that's related to the elementary level, one that's related to the secondary level. One of the reasons that we felt that it made sense to break this out is, in June, we will formalize and bring together a professional development committee, which is a collaboration between administrators and teachers to design professional development in this district. And we anticipate that those groups will oftentimes break out to elementary and secondary, so this gives clarity for each group. The focus at the elementary level, and this has been something that we talked about in our district goals this year, goal number four, this has been a point of conversation with previous superintendents, but designing a robust MTSS system for folks that are not aware of what that stands for, that's multi-tiered systems of support, but basically, a system of intervention ensuring that all students are able to grasp the key academic, and also related to students that may have social-emotional issues. What is the process that we go to? How does the system respond if a student is struggling in a particular area? So we, we are looking to focus on that. One of the things that we know is that we have classroom teachers who are doing excellent work in terms of reading instruction, but they are doing so without an agreed-upon reading curriculum across the district. In K through 5, we do not have a laid-out curriculum for Grade 1, Grade 2, Grade 3, Grade 4, Grade 5. That really needs to happen, and so that is a goal for next year. And then the, the other pieces that we see here, as part of that, getting that all up and running, is getting our instructional coaches trained, getting our literacy tutors trained, and then looking at a large number of professional development for, for faculty and staff. And first part of this work, in terms of reading curriculum and instructional resources, in the fall, we're going to take a snapshot of what is the current state in all of our classrooms, and then taking that information, consolidating that, discussing, and ending up with this, in the spring, with a, with essential agreements at each grade level that clarify the instructional goals for reading at, at each elementary grade level. So that's, that's, that piece there. At the secondary level, we have four areas of focus, and fourth one added after today's conversation at Leadership Team. A couple of these- A couple of these things in particular relate back to the portrait of a graduate and are connected with the NEAS visit. For folks that are not familiar with NEAS, that is the accreditation system for all high schools. NEAS comes and visits and looks at our programs, looks at our documents. They have had their first visit, and next, either fall or spring, we are awaiting final confirmation, they will be coming in and looking to see the progress that was made on agreed-upon goals from their last visit. One of the things that they had recommended and put forth as a goal was portrait of a graduate work, so that that will be something that feeds into that first goal. Another area where there was room for growth in the initial consultation was around our curriculum documents, right? So you see a goal in terms of getting the curriculum documents development done for all of our content areas at the, the middle school and high school in preparation for that NEAS visit. We, the, there has been a fair amount of work done on inclusionary practices, helping classroom teachers have an agreed-upon set of strategies that help students access learning. There, there was a lot of progress being made on that prior to the pandemic. Pandemic happened, and so what we're hearing from our secondary folks is we need to revisit those practices, get them back into place, so that we don't lose the work that was done previously. We have, at the school committee level, had a conversation about world language. So you'll see that in November, that the advisory committee would be coming to the committee to give a report on its work and its recommendations around how to best proceed in this district. And then the, the other piece that was, was added today after conversation was related to the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, also at the secondary level. So we, we want to begin that work as well at the secondary level. And then finally, on goal, goal four, a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And what, what we see there is a book club over the summer, we've talked about a joint meeting between the school committee and the leadership team, PD, and we are also recommending a DEI audit within our goals for next year. So that is what the leadership team has felt, is the critical work for next year. We have outlined timelines for when this work would be done and when you could anticipate hearing presentations about the work as an accountability measure. And at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions and any feedback that you might have to offer on our first draft of the goals.
I just want to go around.
Yeah. Yeah, just go. Great. Peter, are you ready, or do you want to have Anna go first and?
No, she can go first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Great. Thank you, Mary Beth. So I have sort of five high-level comments. I tried not to get too far into the weeds because I know that this was a first draft. So the first comment I'd take, as I, as I reflect on these, I think it would be helpful, and I think it would be a little bit more digestible if it took the form of a goal to an objective to a deliverable. The reason I say that is I think there's a little bit of conflation of a goal with a deliverable, or even just sort of a task or a to-do list. Like, some of the things strike me as more task-oriented as opposed to a higher-level goal. So I think, for me, I would like to see sort of a step back from the action items and reframe it as a prioritization. And as I thought about that and looked at other districts and other plans, and just thought about, you know, what are the, what are the topics that we have goals for, understanding we can't do all things at all times, but I kind of feel like there's a few things that we're, we're just not addressing at all that are really high-level goals. So in terms of overall priorities, I think the district vision and strategic plan definitely is something that's a high-level goal. I think I would reframe the teaching and learning as sort of academic success and achievement. One of the things I think is missing that our public expects action on is facilities and infrastructure. I think the turf field and a plan for the elementary schools, even outside of the MSBA process, which I know we didn't, I think the public is expecting some kind of measurable progress on those topics. So I think professional development and teacher investment is a high-level goal. DEI is a goal, I love to see that one. Peter's going to love this one. I think we should have an explicit technology goal. I think that there needs to be a communication and engagement goal, and a financial sustainability and responsibility goal. So when I was first looking at that, my high-level comment was, these feel like tasks and not goals. And I, I kind of want us to take a step back and say, what do we need to do in these there? So that's one high-level comment. Another thing that struck me is that some of the things mentioned feel like they're sort of default, like regular best practices. So for example, like, the ones that struck, really struck me, one of the goals under teaching and learning says that the instructional coaches are to be trained. In my mind, I'm thinking, that doesn't really feel like a goal. Like, that's just your job. Like, they have, of course they have to be trained. So it's, it felt weird to see it identified as something we would evaluate, because to me, that's, that's not a goal, that's a requirement. Similarly, there's a, a line item that talks about preparing the curriculum documents needed by the accreditation process. That's not really a goal, that's a requirement. So like, I would, I would kind of strip out the things that feel like, if our staff is just doing their basic practice, I don't think we should get credit for that as a goal, if that makes sense. So it feels a little, again, like, too basic. The last comment, and I'm glad you added another one, there's an awful lot of subgroups. Like, there's a lot of planning to plan to plan. So just in this document alone, there's a professional development committee, a portrait of a graduate design committee, a strategic plan design team, and a world language advisory committee. It feels a little bit like DeF by committee. Like, we're, we're going to make a committee to develop a plan, to develop recommendations, and all of that is sort of taking all of next year. So while I feel like those are all worthy, I feel like there's a way that we could leverage existing knowledge and leadership. And on some things, I feel like the leadership team, and you as the superintendent, and we as the school committee, we just need to lead, you know? So I think there's a lot of subcommittees that feels like, you know, one, 27 meetings for everyone, and I feel like it's going to slow the process down. The next thing that struck me, I would like to see some actual measurable criteria. So for example, things like, X percentage of students will see improvement in their proficiency on reading, you know, something measurable. X percentage of students will improve their performance in X number of classes. Percentage of students will take an honors or AP class for the first time. X percentage of district staff will increase in diversity by the year 2030. You know, something around diversity. A timeline and funding strategy for the turf field project will be complete by 2022, 2023? Like, I think the public is looking for something concrete here. So that's, I think some deliverables would be helpful in that. And then the last one, I, obviously, I love the beginning of goal number four. I think everyone in this room knows that. I'm, I'm validated but also frustrated that some of the things I suggested in December are now here. You know, you're talking about PD, which is great. You're talking about an audit, and I, I had to stifle a laugh because that was one of the first things I suggested we do. So this is all great. My concern is that those things actually cost money, and we didn't budget for them. So I'm curious to know, this, I guess, is my only real question to you, is, those are items that I think we should have accounted for in our budget, and I'm not sure that we did, unless you're saying they're going to come out of PD, which was a suggestion I'd made. So that's a question. And then the other thing I just want to sort of draw upon is, I don't know that I love the framing of this as some sort of new initiative, because that implies a beginning and an end. To me, this is the first part of a, a permanent holistic integration of DEI into our district. Like, this is the beginning of a new way of looking at this topic. So I feel like I'd want to reframe it as, like, how are we going to get started? But then from a budget perspective and a sustainability, like, how are we going to do this forever? Like, this isn't, year 2021 is the year of DEI. Great, check, you know, like, I want to see the integration, but I think there's a budget component. So I'd be curious to know how we're going to actually pay for an audit when it comes time to do that, because that will cost us money.
Yeah, it just, you know, I can respond to that. As, as we've talked about, there are, there is stimulus money available. We are still awaiting categories for how that money can be used, but we believe that, that we will be able to work the budget, given those additional funds coming in to pay for an audit. And currently, we are, we are starting the brainstorming process of how do we best utilize that money well. Still very initial brainstorming, because we have neither the allocation nor the, the kind of the spending rules, but we have a high level of confidence that we will have the funding necessary to complete the audit.
I think that's great, because I think, as I've said from the beginning, we can't really develop a comprehensive solution to some of these problems if we don't understand the problems, and that's where the audit comes in. So I'm really happy that you put that in there. Again, it feels a little bit like a task as opposed to a goal, but that's more of a structural thing. So those are all of my comments. I think it's a fine starting point, but I would, I would reframe it along some of the ways that I've described. And I would add in some other goals that I think the community, after, especially after this last week, I think for us to not address head-on, what's the goal around the turf field? Like, we've created a committee, which is great, I think people applaud that, but none of these goals talk about what that committee is going to deliver back to us. And the elementary school problem with the MSBA is, I know we've applied, like, I know Tom puts in the work, we've done the application, and we've been denied, what, three or four years in a row now? At some point, we as a community and as a district have to address the infrastructure, and it might mean we have to do it without the MSBA. I mean, like, we just, we can't, we can't go on without a plan. So I feel like we need to actually really call that out, because I think the public is growing increasingly frustrated with us not doing that. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Here?
No, you can keep going. We're going around the table, right?
Yeah. I'm just going around the table.
I'm still taking some notes, so, if you come back to me.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to jump in. Thank you for this. And I have a lot of notes, because you can't ask a strategic consultant to look at goals without getting a lot of notes. So I, I did a lot of research also. I wanted to see what other school districts were using for their goals, because I honestly just didn't know district goals versus superintendent goals versus school committee goals. So my comments, I have some specific ones and some overall ones. One is that when I looked at the MASC guidance, especially because we're, we're doing the summit evaluation, what is a goal? And they said, the questions that the goals need to answer are, what is the outcome expected from the implementation of this goal, and how will the district be different a year from now if this goal is accomplished? So I want to just read an example from Lewiston, because I think this goal is, I think this is, this goal is what I'm looking for, I'm not sure if it's what everyone's looking for. So this says, Lewiston Public Schools, this is their, their vision, has created an environment of collaboration and transparency with families of students and with our community as a whole. Families of students are actively involved in their children's education. The community is highly engaged in helping provide the best education possible for our children. As a result of our communities and families' commitment to public education, we have established a collaborative approach to solving public education issues that includes our local legislators. So to me, I feel like a goal is more of a high-level vision, and then, so that's the MASC and then the Lewiston example, okay. So then, I also looked at Penfield School, I don't know where Penfield School is, but what I liked that they did is they laid out these big goals, but then they qualified them. So they wrote, you know, this, this big goal, but then they wrote, to assure achievement of this goal, schools will create action plans that target, which is basically this, the, the action tasks, and then to assure achievement of this goal, the Board of Education will monitor. So it almost gives us guidance as to what to monitor, but it also separates, like Anna said, what is the goal and what are the action steps? And I also agree, I think that there need to be academic criteria, like, I mean, I've got a million examples here, but one example, you know, increasing the percentage of students scoring above the state and local standards, the, you know, number of students taking AP classes, you know, those kinds of things. I think, because this is a draft, like, we just need to work through what we want to prioritize.
If I, I could offer one thought there. One of the, the pieces around that is the idea of having clear starting benchmarks.
Yeah.
And part of the work that we will be engaging in this summer for building out the intervention system and those types of pieces, is to establish the assessments that would actually give us that first round of benchmarks. Where are we starting from? Because it's hard to say, you know, what's your goal, where are you going to get to if you don't have clarity around a starting point? So one way we could address that is to talk about developing benchmarks.
Yes.
For next year. And then the following year, you could say, okay, this is where we were, and for this year, we want to raise that level of performance up to this level. But we first have to be able to identify kind of the starting point.
Exactly.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
I love that, developing benchmarks. And a couple other things, I, I think that, and Anna used exactly what I wanted to say, putting improving teaching and learning into an overall academic success and achievement goal, I mean, these are, of course, just my suggestions. And then I know we probably only want four goals, but I really strongly believe that family, parent, community engagement needs to be a goal. And I, I just, I think that, I just really strongly believe that. And the, the only, and the other thing, the one last little nitpicky thing, is that I always think of an audit as providing direction, so I wonder if the audit should come earlier than creating the plan. Because I feel like if we're going to create a plan, and then the audit comes back and tells us 10,000 other things that we need to look at, it might, it's like, it just seems like a wasted opportunity. So I, I wonder if we can move that around a little bit, but that's not really.
We did actually have that conversation in our meeting, and we, we felt that we could target January, February, so that we would have that information as we're developing the strategic plan.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, you can't do the strategic plan without.
Right, right. So having that data in advance will help us to know where the, the work is needed.
Okay. Yep, those are my, my, my comments. Oh, I did have a question, actually. What are, what is a current state document?
So capturing, like I said, one of the challenges that folks have been unpacking is, this issue has been looked at for several years, and that there is not consistency in instructional resources that are being used, in pacing guides, in, in actual curriculum at all the grade levels. So the very first piece is to say, what do we have? Like, what are people using? What are the different curriculums that are out there, so that we know our, our starting state, right? That would be the first step. And then, okay, here's what we're doing, let's start having conversations about how we pull this together. How, you know, what are the different resources that are being used? What's people's experiences with them? What are the outcomes of different resources? And to start to consolidate things into what I would call an essential agreements document. So in grade one, you know, this is how much time we spend on phonics development with foundations, you know, this, and this is the amount of time that we are going to dedicate to this particular unit of study. All those types of things need to, to get unpacked and articulated, but step one is figuring out what we've actually got. Does that, did that answer your question?
Yes. I knew it was something like an education term, because I didn't know. All right, thank you.
David?
Sure. I guess I'll start, I'll, I'll move backwards and start just echoing something Julia said, where, you know, I think the idea of DEI audit is something that should be really pushed up front, like, arguably to the end of this year. So we have an action plan moving into next year. Having been through a few at different places I've been, I think you're going to be surprised at the results and the, the depth and breadth of the results. And that being said, and not to do any disservice to anybody in this district. And that being said, and not to do any disservice to anybody in this district, we most likely don't have the correct personnel to create the action plan needed to identify all those problem areas. Again, this is just as a result of living through them. It's no sort of ill-intent to anyone within our district. Excuse me. And I do think that will sort of end up being a budget item that we will be discussing next fall and winter. Excuse me, for probably some sort of onboarding or consulting. You know, so that's, you know, I'll sort of fly at 30,000 feet here. The next step, you know, in goal three, the taking aside the very, very important discussion and much larger discussion that is the long-term view of world language in our district, right? How to make it financially viable and everything else, all the facets that go into that. I'm pretty shocked at the low benchmarks at most of these, most of these bullet points, right? You know, to be a teacher at Massachusetts, you need to be SCI endorsed. That inclusive practices are the basic tenants of that SCI endorsement, right? And the fact that we're actually not, you know, that we need to call that out as a district goal is a little disappointing. But what I do appreciate is the fact that we realize that it is something, hey, you know what? We need to readdress this, right? The same thing about, you know, the learning walks, things of that nature, right? This is common practice. Is that something that's not happening? Is this the result of, you know, let's do a hard look at ourselves and realize that this is something that's just sort of fallen by the wayside, living through a pandemic? You know, and just we want to get back on task, right? Which I can appreciate. Or, you know, is that something we need to address at a higher level? Like, why, why haven't this, you know, not happened?
David, if I could just quickly respond to that. One of the things that has come out of our conversation is that there was a lot of work that was getting launched
Yeah.
right before the pandemic. And what the, what folks were reporting is as the pandemic occurred, that work just kind of fell by the late wayside. So we want to reinvigorate that work, make sure that that's solid before we start taking on additional things.
So again, I can appreciate that, you know, but I think for, it's also important for me to sort of address, so people see and say, like, you know, some of this stuff is us needing to catch up. And I don't think that's a bad thing. Because I also think that, you know, in true transparency, to let people know that, you know, we realize that there is catching up to do now after, you know, as we look at a more normal school year. Excuse me. That being said, you know, I skip to the end or the last two, you know, in the idea of, I'm sorry, the last one and one prior, one earlier, just about the documentation of our curriculum. We've known that's something that's been missing for years now, that it has been addressed in past NIESK visits. And, you know, I know, I like seeing that on there because I really, I think that's a much higher priority than it's sort of getting lost in the shuffle here. You know, the goal number two, I think, is really good. I think that's, I think we need, as a, as a committee, you know, and as a leadership team, need to make sure that we are, again, letting the public know how important this is, the fact that we are realizing that as great as our district is, we have, you know, areas that need really drastic improvement. And this is, we have the data backing up that this is, you know, part of that. And we see it, we're addressing it. There are hard decisions to be make, to be making, but we're working towards, you know, fixing those. Excuse me. District vision, strategic plan. There's a lot of committees on there, you know. I'd like to see more action, but I like the idea of this. I do, I am afraid, you know, like Anna said, that it's sort of death by committee, right? We've had this turf field committee coming around. And you know me, I'm always on the fields, right? I see it, I live it every day, and I hear it from everybody, you know? So let's not get lost in making the plans. I know, I know Tom's with me. He's looking at me right now. I'm not saying anything about you, Tom. The one last thing I do want to mention is just the timing of this is coming out. I really think this whole initial process should have happened in our next meeting. We do have Dr. Carr here joining us tonight, but to be talking about this year's goals before our new board is actually, you know, voted in, a little premature. So thank you for being here tonight, Jen. But, you know, it just sort of puts her a little bit behind the eight ball coming in, having to catch up, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, because it's such an important issue, I wanted to be sure that we left enough time for dialogue. So I appreciate that you are here, Jen Carr, to listen in and get yourself caught up around that. But I didn't, I wanted to be sure that we had enough time. So first draft, first pass, feedback's been really helpful. So we come back next time, we'll have some revisions for you. But I appreciate that. It's going to be important that the next board that gets voted in is the board that votes this.
Right.
Thank you.
Dana, did you have anything?
Yeah, I actually think it's helpful to go after several other people because I don't think I'll have as much to say. I wanted to, I think Julia said one thing that I would have, Julia does, and I do similar work in very different ways, but similarly, I like and I don't, I'm actually not sure if that's normal, how a district, but it seems more of a strategic plan kind of a statement that Julia read, but that was my first initial feeling too, is that these, for me, I felt pretty good about these as kind of, they did feel underneath a big goal. And I wondered if even like the comment, I think it was Julia or maybe David said, about including sort of family engagement. I sort of see that, like, there's a way to include that in that big goal because I think certainly part of the district vision and strategic plan really can speak to that. And so I don't, I don't, I didn't, I guess I'm not as worried as maybe some other people are, but I did want to echo that that spoke to me, that I would have liked to have kind of a big, big 30,000-foot vision for the goals. And I also know that that's what we are creating in the strategic plan is the big picture. But I did have, one thing that I, to be honest, I hadn't written down, but a couple of people have mentioned it, Anna mentioned about, do we need some sort of a facilities, infrastructure goal? I actually didn't write that down and I wrote it down when you were talking. I wonder, I'm just curious about whether there is a way, like, it's maybe all one thing, like, infrastructure, technology, modernization kind of a goal might be. And I don't know, it's just, I'm just talking. And then I just had a quick question about, I know a little bit about the professional development group that you are developing, but you kind of mentioned it. So I don't know, I don't know if I need to know too much more about that, but that's something that it seems like it's going to be involved in all of the goal, and goal two and three. Would that be correct?
That would be correct, that the, one of the things that we are moving forward with is a professional development committee that will have a partnership between teachers and administrators to design our in-service days and our early release Wednesdays. And so this goal document becomes a critical piece for them when they're, they're looking at, okay, how are we going to use those ER days? What do we do in those full-in-service days? If this is the outcome that we're looking for as a district. So they will be handed this document as they begin their work over the summer to prep that time for the school year next year.
Just two quick clarifying questions. So the professional development group is made up of teachers?
Teachers and administrators together.
Okay.
Yep.
So teachers and administrators. And this document, I guess this is just a question. This document was created by a large number of people because you listed them all at the beginning.
Yes.
So, and now you've got a whole other large group of people who are giving you info on it. So how, and I don't need a long-winded, but just like, how does it get tweaked? Like, how do you, what's your next step?
Yeah, so what I intend to do is to take the feedback that I'm receiving this evening, bring it back to the leadership team.
Okay.
Say, okay, are there things here that make sense to incorporate? If there are things that folks say, you know, we hear that, but we really can't do that and this is the reason why, then I can bring that back to you. So I'm taking notes and we'll bring this back to the leadership team. So the next version will reflect, you know, what you're asking for and what the leadership team feels like that could look like or an explanation as to why the leadership team thinks that that would be problematic. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
I guess I'm just going to reinforce what others said. But the one thing is, how can we weave parents' voices into the goals without adding to the advisory committees? Because I think what people said, the, you know, the death by committee sometimes puts the brakes on things. So how can we get their voices in this without complicating it? I know this is an early draft, but I do, would like to see some measurable items. You know, how to capture that, what data are we looking for? How can we track how our students are doing? I love the collaboration between the administrators and the teachers. I think everything we've heard this year talks about, or we've heard, talks about, you know, the disconnect, whether that's real, you know, or not, we don't know. But we need, we need to come to a roundtable and, and know that we're all working towards the same goal, which is great. And, you know, talking about facilities and technology, so, but my question is, what's the right amount of goals? What's enough? What's too much? You know, especially coming off of the pandemic. You know, is it best for us to really focus on, let's just say, the four goals that are here? To really get us out of where we were this last, you know, 16 months to a better place? So.
Yeah, I would caution, and that's part of what I want to talk with the leadership team about, is sometimes when you try to do everything, you end up doing nothing well, right? And so there, you know, what's the sweet spot where you're challenging yourself and moving as forward as best, you know, as best and as fast as you can, but not so stretched that there's not focus, right? And people are offering some good thoughts. I really want to go back to the team and say, all right, what's feasible? What do you feel like we can accomplish? You know, I would say typically you see three or four major goals. You know, there are some that may be targeted. The other thing that I think we have to have a discussion about is if the same person has a critical role in four of these goals, that becomes really difficult. But if there are ways to break out the goals that say, this group of people can be focused on this, and that's really not going to impede this group getting this done. So that's, those are the kinds of conversations I want to have to try to straighten that out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Peter?
Sure, thank you. I've been saying for a long time, I've been saying what my vision is for the district and I don't disagree with any of these. I do think we need a vision for the district. I do think we need to improve elementary and secondary education. We do need to have a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I just worry about the timing. I just think, I'm concerned, you know, that the portrait of a graduate, we know that this is a national movement. We know what the visionary, visioning process is going to teach us. It's not going to look much different across the country. And I just think we should start implementing some of it now, not waiting two or three years to implement, you know, parts of a district vision. I just don't think we should wait. And it's funny, I hear people talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, modernization being data-driven, and I come back to a learning management system time and time again. I've been researching these for a few years now, actually probably more than four years now. If we want a data-driven district, we should have a learning management system. If we want to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion, we should have a learning, a learning management system because it will help identify equity issues. It will create that baseball card snapshot of statistics for every student. So parents and teachers will know exactly where their students are at, where every cohort's at, where every classroom's at, where every teacher's at. And they'll know what workers do, they'll know how they're doing. Learning management systems are adaptive, adaptive, so they can see. It will, it will recognize a student's strengths and their preferred learning style and it will direct them in their formative assessments down that path. Hey, this student learns best through video. This student learns best through text or, and so it'll, it'll direct them down that path of preferred learning style. So by the time they get to a summit of assessment, they crush it. There's no chance of them not, you know, not passing. It'll horizontally and vertically align the curriculum. So it will, it will help us break out of this 100-year-old model of education that we're stuck in. The model of education we're using today was created 100 years ago where subjects are taught in isolation. There's very little, you know, collaborative cross-curriculum learning, project-based learning. I just, and so this will ensure, you know, also ensure students are getting the same information across, across each teacher's, you know, across each class. It'll help modernize our education. It's the same system they'll be using when they get to university. So my big concerns are that I hope this will include a serious study of a learning management system. I hope you'll have an expert come in and respectfully listen to and pay attention to that person. I'm concerned that I don't, I want to make sure that there's, within these goals, that there is a plan to stop losing programs. I don't, I've been saying it from my, my big awakening being on the school committee is we do not have a budget spending problem. We have a revenue problem. Even at level services budget, it's hard not to get into an override situation, which just means we're going to keep losing programs. We've already lost AP classes. We've lost language. Reading specialists were redirected. The turf field is, the last year, the football field was deemed unsafe. The track can only be used for practice but not competition. The tennis courts are unusable. We're not bringing language back to, right? One of my big visions was to bring language K through 12. And I don't see, I'm hoping, I guess, I'm hoping these goals of improving teaching in elementary and middle school will include a serious look at bringing language from K through 12. If we really want to be an innovative district, we should not be a one-language school, seven through 12. And I just, I think we're just going to keep losing language. But we need to look at language, be innovative. Be a K through 12 learning district. We need to be out of this 100-year-old model of education. We want to be a go-to district where parents seek us out, like parents seek out Milton. They don't, I don't know. Yeah, so those are my big concerns. Death by committee keeps coming up and I agree. We've had three superintendents in three years. I have no idea what the future entails. But I hope if you're committed to do something now, that if a new superintendent comes in, we stick with it and not have a new superintendent with a new vision and we have to go through committee again and again and again. I just, yeah, so I hope we can establish a vision, a big picture that we can stick with regardless of who's at the helm and no matter who's on the committee, that we have a, the legacy is we have established a vision, we stick with it and, and, you know, let it be our North Star. I just, right now, I haven't seen that in three years. That's my frustration. So let's, let's, let's start implementing some of the things we know what the portrait of a graduate visionaring process is going to show. Let's do a serious study of learning management. Let's figure out how we're going to stop losing AP programs, language, sports. Those are my, my big picture takeaways. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I would echo just a couple of things. One, I think the portrait of a graduate's purpose is to engage the community. So somehow we should weave that in there. I think one thing I've heard.
Michelle, I'm having trouble here. I'm sorry. Thank you, same.
I'm never told that people can't hear me. It's like so amazing. Okay, so the first thing is that I think the portrait, the purpose of the portrait of the graduate is to engage the community. So somehow that can get rolled into here. One thing that I've heard, the HWEA is about the transfer goals that they had created. And I think that the portrait of the graduate is not about what the teachers believe. It's what the community and all the stakeholders believe. So it's the, the parents, the students, the people who live in the community, the teachers, the administrators. So that'll be a good, a good thing. And I want to commend you, actually, on the formation of all these committees, because it's not, it's not the same people on these committees being worked to death. It's engaging everybody in their part, and it allows everybody to be heard. And I am concerned about getting too many goals. So if we can figure out really what the most important things are and stick with that. And then when it comes to the facilities, the turf and the stuff like that, I'm not sure if that's a district goal or a school committee's goal. Because the turf thing, while Tom is helping to make this group, is really about the school committee engaging that group, and the school committee using that group, and the GALE study being done, and then the school committee evaluating that. So I'm not sure if it's a district goal or if it's a school committee goal. So we'll have to sort of suss that out a little bit, so. All right, so we'll be seeing goals again, because this is never done. All right, so now we are on to, we have a presentation tonight. Hi! By E.J. Everett. And you can, now, do you have something that you are airplaying? Or are you wanting us to click your slides? What do you want us to do?
Yeah, Michelle, we already talked about it. Tom's going to broadcast and...
Great.
Michelle, can I give a moment of introduction about how we came to be here?
No. But he, he, E.J.'s here to present to us. We, like, what would your introduction be?
You just mean introducing the speaker, correct?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you all for having me. This is a presentation from a club at the high school, the Hamilton-Swam social justice club. Thank you for having me again, happy to be here. And this is about something that we're advocating for, which is a land acknowledgement policy. And I know that's not familiar with everybody, so I want to begin by giving an example. We all live on indigenous land. We would like to begin by acknowledging the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and commonwealth of Massachusetts have taken their name. We would like to pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and to their descendants who still inhabit historical Massachusetts tribe territories to this day. That's a statement from the vice president of the tribe. So that is our proposal. And the reason I began with, I began with it is because the idea of a land acknowledgement policy is to read that before you begin your activities. A more formal definition is here on the screen from the Massachusetts Center of Native American Awareness. And it's the idea to read this statement acknowledging the history of the land. And, next slide. Something that I liked about that quote is that it gets into one of the reasons that this is so important, which is that it's very easy to think that this is all in the past, when in reality, you know, for example, for example, the Massachusetts tribe is still around. They're still here. And this is not all historical. It's still very current, even though indigenous people are rarely in history books unless their land is being taken away. So there isn't very much telling of this story. But they are still around, and we don't want to erase that. Or the tragedy that has happened in the history of our country with so many people dying, so many families being separated, so much culture being erased. Just like with other historical tragedies, we don't want to forget and let it happen again. This kind of reflection can also inspire action, both in the person who's reading it, because when you take a minute of your day at the start of a meeting, you can reflect on your own connection to the land. And it can also inform people, because so many people don't even know about these policies existing. And it is also a direct connection to local history, since mascanoma is buried in Hamilton. I'm not going to read all of these, but these are a few of the, just within our state places that have adopted this. There are a few local municipalities. And it's already spreading among educational institutions. We are kind of a, you know, Boston's a college town. And it's also very widespread in, like, Canada, Australia, and New Zealand, since they have similar history to us. And it's, and it's beginning in the United States to spread as well. Next slide. So this is the, here are the requests. It seems like a lot, but not all of these are relevant to this specific school committee. Essentially, we would be asking for physical markers on the school campuses and also on the websites. So if people are here on our campus, or if they want to learn, or they want to learn about us on the website, they know where we are in more ways than one, and they know about our history. And we would also want to read the statement before important community gathering events. So it would be like, think of a play production or an open house, something that has a lot of people coming together for, yeah, gathering. And this would also include virtual events, since we are probably going to be zooming in from Massachusetts, from Massachusetts land, and it is where we conduct our business, even if people are not all in the same room together. And the funding would be provided by our club. Are there any questions?
Other questions? Peter?
Is the land acknowledgement fairly standard? Or is it different from state to state, from tribe to tribe area?
Oh, yeah, it's very different depending on where you are. It's individual based on the, like, in Canada, they've got treaties that they have to, that they're talking about, where, yeah, the history is so different. So it's very personal.
Peter?
Oh, thank you. Thank you for doing this. In fact, I have two students on, who are doing this, two of my students for their Action Civics project are working on land acknowledgement. And they're trying to figure out what that could look like. I saw that you had plaques at different places. Some, their research showed that some district websites had it on their website as an acknowledgement as well, and, and there. And then they also had the idea of having an announcement either once a week, once a month, once a year, acknowledging that the school is on land traditionally inhabited by the indigenous people. I'm just wondering if you, if you found a solution, like, can announce, do announcements have to go through the school committee or the superintendent? Could they be done at schools? Plaques obviously have a school committee policy, right? So I'm selfishly asking for them, because you're, you're the resident expert here on this. And I'm just wondering what you've run into, like, what's possible? Like, a plaque, but obviously school committee announcements. Maybe that can just be done through the principal website, might have to be done through the superintendent. I wonder what you've come across in your research.
I am more of an expert, well, you flatter me with expert. I'm more knowledgeable about the kind of reasoning behind us and why it's important, not as much the mechanics of whose authority it is to put things on the website versus on the campus. So that's not actually something that I'm really knowledgeable about.
So I guess my question is, what are, what are, what are you hoping the school committee will do, will do for land acknowledgement? Is it a plaque? Is it a website, putting it on our website? Is it an announcement in the schools?
For the, for the things that you do have control over, ideally implementing that. And if you don't have control over it, like, the website, you can also, like, put a vote of support, showing that, you know, the school committee is behind that.
Thank you. Good job. Nice work.
Dana?
Oh, sorry. E.J., can you, can you get a little closer to the mic? I'm, I am hearing you, but it's, it's effort.
Sorry about that.
So first of all, I like, I really appreciated your answer just now to Peter, because I think, I want to give you really positive feedback, that what you said is you were really more communicating what this was about and why, rather than the logistics of how, of how it's going to play out. And I think you did an excellent job of that. Like, I, I really feel like that's what you relayed, like, why. And, and, and I think unfortunately, a lot of our questions are going to be about the logistics about. And so I appreciated your answer, because, because I think you did get, give a great overview of how and of why it's important. So I'm going to, I might be still asking the same thing. But is your vision, or in your dream, if you will, would it be at, like, the opening of every school committee meeting that someone would read this land acknowledgement? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that would be one example, like, if we do the Pledge of Allegiance, that's another kind of thing that we would do to begin the meeting.
And the, the example that you gave, the, I don't know, the, you know, that you gave of an acknowledgement, this one here, so you gave this example from, is this...
That is what we would like to...
I'm sorry, say it again.
That is the statement that we would like to read.
Right, so this is, this is, that was my question. There's not, it's not that there are several examples. This is the Massachusetts tribe example that you, that would be used.
Yes.
Okay.
We would, it would probably be slightly modified, like, it mentions, "I would like to begin by," so we wouldn't have that if we're, if it's like a physical statement or... But that's the statement for beginning an event. But we could slightly tweak it for, yeah, if it's a plaque or what have you. But that's the general gist.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Michelle?
Hi, E.J., it's nice to see you. Thank you for this. So my question is, now as a senior, do you feel that your education in Hamilton-Wentham led you to this positively or negatively? And I'm, or is it, maybe it's not fair, because it's where education is right now, and hopefully it's changing. But can you add, give us any insight to maybe how you came up, came to this?
I'm trying to think of where I first heard of it. I think it could have, I think it was probably through my work. I think that was it. I think it was at my job at the Food Project. I think I've done kind of outside research, like, reading, reading books about indigenous history in the United States. Overall, like, Hamilton-Wentham schooling didn't teach me very much. Although I think you make a good point that it's also not, like, relatively, it wasn't especially lacking. But yeah, I definitely remember, like, elementary school, some stuff about Thanksgiving, and how it was really just like, it was really brushing over the hard parts and kind of acting like, they were just like, oh, you know, welcome. And they were just like feeding each other instead of all the serious stuff that happened. And beyond that kind of elementary school stuff, I don't remember hearing much else. There was one book, there was a choice book in ninth grade.
So, so maybe this is a start, hopefully, for things to change in, you know, just a step in the right direction for more culturally appropriate, I don't know if the right word is, culturally appropriate representation, I guess. So, thank you for this.
So I've been hearing at meetings that you've had recently, and then afterwards, from some people, that there's controversy. Maybe it's just me, or maybe it's my corner. I'm having trouble hearing you, and I'm actually having trouble hearing you also.
That's just not working.
Yeah. All right, I will speak. I have been hearing at various meetings where you've been speaking, and then after that, having people speak to me, that there's some controversy around this. And I was wondering if you could explain to me what the controversy is.
So there are some questions, because this history is pretty murky, because there were, most of the sources were colonists. So they weren't necessarily paying the closest to attention to the indigenous peoples' government structures or that sort of thing. I think there have been some questions about if this means that we are, like, giving up our right to this land, which it is legally United States territory. And I think in the schools, it doesn't matter that much, since it's... Like, me reading this, reading it before this committee isn't the same as, like, legally giving up the land. So I think that was one concern. But I think the United Nations has talked about that. Because again, like, there are countries where this is pretty commonplace, and there are a lot of organizations doing it, like, you know, it even happened at the Oscars and, you know, Harvard University, and they aren't, like, trying to give up their land. So that was one concern. And I think there's also questions about whether, about the... So some of the sources, again, some of the resources I listed, which are more of like, there are less citations and more guides for further research. So there's like lands.ca, which is a world map. And instead of having countries, it's mapped by indigenous territories, which was really cool to look at, because when I look at a world map, it's like, you know, the United States, Canada. You can take a single step, and suddenly you're in Canada. Versus like, in the indigenous view of the world, it's like, people, you know, one person occupies the lands during the winter, another group occupies it during the summer. So basically, it is a very complicated... So basically, a lot of the land bots, there's like a text bot that you can say your address, and they will tell you whose land you're on. But the Massachusetts tribe, after contacting them, is the... I trust them, because I think they probably know more than I do. After a little bit of Googling, I think they know their history best. And they are saying that the Massachusetts tribe is the most accurate way of, of, of honoring the people who lives in this area, because there were other people who were bands of the Massachusetts. They were, but they were within them, which is a little bit like saying, like how there's, you know, Hamilton-Wentham, there's Essex County, there's the state of Massachusetts, there's like the United States. And it's simplest and most accurate to just mention the Massachusetts tribe. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So thank you, Everett, for awesome presentation. I wanted to answer a question from Peter and Dana a little bit about some of the logistics of how this could look.
Can I just say, it must be me, like, I literally, I'm having trouble, and I...
Logistics.
I just, so you got to talk right into the mic for me.
All right, I'm right, I'm right into the mic. And what I was going to say by way of introduction is that Everett and the students of the Social Justice Club reached out to me mostly as a municipal navigator, I would say is the best role I could play here. But some of the research that I ended up doing were some of those conceptual questions of like, who else is doing this? What does it look like in a school district? And had a really interesting conversation with a school committee member of the Mashpee Public Schools, who have probably taken this the farthest. So there are other districts that are doing it. And to Everett's point, you know, the... And to Everett's point, you know, there's no perfect way of doing it. We would have some discretion. You know, for example, the Lexington Public Schools do have it right on their website. Like some districts have built it into their equity part of the website. That's true in Mashpee. In Mashpee, they also have the statement, so that, that statement from the Massachusetts tribe, for them is for the Mashpee because that's their jurisdiction. But it's right on the wall, like, you know, instead of the exit sign, you'd have the land acknowledgement just up, you know, in the building. So there's a lot of ways that it could be done. There's not a universal truth on that. So it's really, it's really a matter of how the district would want to implement something like this, which is where Everett and the students, you know, their requests are fairly straightforward. And I could go into tremendous painful detail about how the Massachusetts tribe substantiated their claim to the land. It's, it's been fascinating to journey with Everett to sort of understand how those hierarchies work. So if people do have further questions about why the Massachusetts and not the Pawtucket or the Agawam or the Wampanoag or the Nipmuck or any of the other tribes here, I think Everett and I are both pretty well versed to answer those questions at this point. So, thank you Everett for presenting again.
Peter?
Just quickly, I want, thank you, and I want you to know that you were inspired to of my students because when Ms. Seizik brought it up, I looked into it and we were working, our students are working on our Action Civics project. I told them about it, they immediately were inspired by your work and are doing that in our school as well. So thank you for that. And I just wanted to, maybe we can ask the superintendent, like, I guess, you know, we know plaques require school committee approval. I don't know about, can a principal make a decision about announcements on the speaker occasionally or a poster in a, or painting on the wall? Like, I guess, where, I guess what could this look like in our schools and what level of approvals are needed?
I would say that this would be something that the school committee would want to vote on as, as something to acknowledge in our school district, and then we would move from there in terms of whether it would be a plaque or a-
Website.
...announcement at meetings. But I would say that this would be the body that would indicate if the district would engage in this, this practice.
So it could look, it could take many forms. It could be on the wall, it could be on our website, it could be at meetings, it could be a plaque, it could be announcements on the speaker. So we need specifics in that.
The recognition on our calendar, that we recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day.
On Indigenous Peoples', yeah, so there's lots of different forms it could take.
All right.
Good on you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Everett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, the only thing I was going to say really, I mean, and it just doesn't speak to, I mean, this could be added to our curriculum, right? I mean, it's really easy, you're just throwing it, you know, like teaching it at the elementary level and, hey, where do you think this comes from? And have it be a service project like that. You know, and just to touch base on the fact that like where the controversy is around is a lot of people like immediately go to like, oh, well, if we acknowledge that the land belongs to them, then they have, they can come back and take our, that's not what this is saying at all. So, you know, this language is actually very comfortable. You know, so I do think it's something that we as a committee should take up and move forward.
Great, thank you.
Can I say one thing? I think the distinction is it's a, it's a land acknowledgement. You know, that's where the distinction is. It's not a land claim. It's sort of, so that's, that's what I think the distinction is, it's more of an acknowledgement.
Right. Super.
Michelle may say one other thing.
All right. Come on, guys, like, you know.
What I was going to say, David, to your point, in terms of curriculum, on the last slide that Everett prepared, there were a number of resources, and one of the conversations that's been had is the Massachusetts tribe is working on secondary and elementary curriculum. There's another Boston-based group called the Upstander Project that also has done a lot of curriculum development, and they actually have, Mary Beth, in terms of professional development, they actually have a professional development series that's targeted for teachers. So part of the reason I wanted to bring this to us now, but I'm making good on my promise to Dana, no force to vote, right? No voting. But I think that it's important to put this in because I do think, David, to your point, this is a curriculum piece, it's a DEI component of recognizing something in our community. There's a lot of professional development starting to happen around these issues. So if you look at the resource page that Everett prepared, there's a lot of resources and some of them are very specifically geared around curriculum. So as you digest it in preparation for our next conversations, there's, there's a lot of research and self-learning that we can all do, so.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything new to say? Okay, great. So now we're going to move on to, so there's been some, well, especially this year, there's a logo out there with the, okay, it's not a logo. Hamilton-Wentoo School District has a logo.
It's called a mascot.
Yes, we have a logo. We have a mascot as well. And there are different versions of the mascot floating around out there. This year, in the spirit of being modern, Jerry the General wears a mask. In times past, it has looked like this black and white logo, which it has, you know, something that looks like General Patton from the movie. And then in other times, we see General Patton, it looks almost exactly the same except for some of the like regalia has been removed and the weapons have been removed. So there's been a discussion about which one of these is really the representation of our mascot. And so that is the question, and I had mentioned this to Catherine Harrison. She had some recollection that this had been discussed before, which is how this other one came into being, but nobody has actually any proof of that, I would say. So it's, it's one of those things where there's legend, but there's, you know, sometimes legends are based on fact and sometimes legends are not based on fact. So I guess that's our discussion. And I will say that Anna provided some examples of where this is on school ground. And back in the spring, I had asked Dr. Kuppenberger about the issue of a logo and, you know, like other entities printing it. And she basically said, well, unless you have copyrighted it, anybody can print it. So if you don't copyright it, you don't have control over what it looks like. So we don't have control over where this gets printed because we don't own it. So that's another sort of like side issue, so.
Yeah, but that was part of the, was brought up in the whole conversation, is the fact that it's such a mess because it hasn't been controlled by the district.
Right. So what do we want to, what exactly do we want to talk about? Or do we want to hear from Tom? Do we want to hear Tom's report first?
Sure, I'm happy to recite what I included as an exhibit. So on April 24th, it was brought to my attention through the superintendent, there was a concern brought forward by a school committee member, Ms. Seizik, about the appearance of Jerry the General with a weapon. You know, after being alerted that there was legend that the school committee had taken action in the past to kind of restrict the use of that version of the logo, I went out to the signs that I could reach from the ground, took out my artist set and gave it a temporary cover-up until further information could be presented to you. The banners in the gymnasium, there's a banner outside of the gymnasium, some of the locations on the stadium field that would need to be changed out. So Mr. Genualdo and I are coming up with an inventory and will present back to the school committee on the order of magnitude of how far this reaches.
Do you know what you have on, do you have both of these logos on digital file? Do you know?
So over the summer, as we were, our team was printing up signs, as you can see by the door.
Yeah.
There wasn't a high-resolution image of the General. So working with a graphics team through a printing company, we were able to come up with a high-resolution image to use for that. So we do have the image on the right, even though that's low resolution in this photo here, we do have a copy of a high-resolution file without the weapons, so.
So if someone were to come to the district and say, you know, whatever principal, whatever, that we want that, you would provide them with the one on the right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. All right, does somebody have questions?
I would caution though that there are so many copies floating around the internet.
You can't control that.
People just do a Google image search, they pull the first one they see, it ends up on t-shirts, masks, whatever you-
Right, you can't control that, so, yeah. Anna?
So just as a point of clarification, a little bit of point of order, my email with the pictures of the weapons was in direct response to your request for, I thought the weapons were gone, have you seen it? And I thought, I've definitely seen it, let me remind myself where. However, my interest in bringing this forward to the committee, I think, has been a little bit misrepresented here. The weapons are a problem, I think we all can agree to that. My interest is that I would actually like to discuss the retirement entirely of using this cartoon representation of a general. And I do think that that falls both into a DEI conversation as well as a strategic planning conversation, a branding conversation. So what I wanted to have the committee talk about is, does that cartoon character accurately represent present-day Hamilton-Wentoo generals? And my concern with it were, the weapons are a new-brainer, that's obvious. My other issue with it is that it's not gender-neutral, it is gender-specific, it is dated, it is cartoonish, it is an adult male that looks not represent, I mean, it looks like a representation of General Patton, which I understand, but present-day Hamilton-Wentoo generals are of many genders and non-binary. So I have a gender issue, I have a design issue, I have a weapons issue, I have a dated issue. I would actually argue we already, and Tom, I'm really glad you put this agenda together, we already have another logo in the star motif that exists, that is gender-neutral, that plays off of the general's motif. So again, I don't think we're in a position to make a decision tonight, and I know that the community has very strong feelings about this, so I'm not rushing to say this is the end. But I think we need to evaluate whether or not the general as a cartoon is the right look for our district, and if it's really sending the messages of modern and inclusive design for the district. So I just, I wanted to make sure everyone knows that that was my motivation to put it on the agenda. It wasn't about take the weapons off the general everywhere Tom can reach it with a paint can, which I'm personally really excited to go see how that worked out.
Please, it's not my greatest work, so please, like-
Was it a paint can or was it a Sharpie? Because I had recommended a Sharpie.
No, it was a enamel paint, from an artist's brushes.
I'm sort of curious to hear if anyone else in the committee is bothered by this in the slightest at all, but it bothers me because I don't feel like that general represents the generals that I know. And that's why I wanted to have a conversation.
Okay. I just want to say that this is a community issue, it's not a school issue, because this Jerry the General has been around since the mid-'60s. There's a lot of people in town that were in the high school when it was developed. They feel pride in that. We have a strong contingency of veterans in the town that are really connected with this. Personally, you know, my four children, two daughters graduated in 14 and 17. They competed as a general for 24 varsity seasons with multiple all-state Eastern Mass, Cape Pen League championships. I checked in with them as 24 and 22-year-old women, very strong women, and they said, keep Jerry the General. It's who we are, it's who the town is, and it's, it's what they want. So, and I did hear that in the '90s, and David, you speak, you spoke to this, they were called the Ladybugs, and the athletes, the women, young girl athletes in the '90s refused to be called the Ladybugs and wanted to be called generals under, and Jerry General as their mascot. So I hear what you're saying, but I don't think it's fair for us as a seventh board member with only one person that competed in Hamilton-Wentoo and grew up in Hamilton-Wentoo to make a decision that's really rude in this community. And to echo what we said at the two meetings ago, we have bigger issues to deal with. Jerry the General is the least of our issues right now. And I think, you know, something down, once we get out of this, if we want to tighten him up, if we want, and the thing too, is that I've used him as a booster parent, I've taken the guns off of him. If, if the girls' team wants to make Jerry the General, Jerry with a J or with a G, they can do that because it's versatile. It is, it is easy to do that, but I think, I just, I just don't think this is worth our time to do right now. I don't. And I think it's, it's a community issue, and again, I listen to my daughters, so.
Anna, something?
Yep, you go ahead. You're good? Go ahead.
I'm a very linear thinker. Okay. I kind of want to split the difference here between Anna and Michelle, which is that I think that it's, it's really important, you know, if you've done any, I'm sure, Anna, I'm sure you have and probably other people had, looked at other districts and read about how they went about changing the mascot, if, if that was a thing. And I think, I actually am willing to do this work, but I would really support what Michelle's saying about that it needs to be full-on engaged with the community and that it needs to be done, like I think it's going to take time. I think it can't feel like we didn't engage with the community. I, I am willing to engage and I am actually open, I don't have a decision about how, in other words, I could, I would want to listen and hear what the community has to say. And I think that that, I don't feel a pressing sense of urgency, like that we have to do it right this second, I feel like it could take time. But I guess my biggest concern was I would want the whole community to feel like they had a say and felt heard. That's, and I think that that can, that needs to take some time in order to do that, so.
Anything?
Oh, my turn.
Well, you know, linearly, you would be next.
What you guys probably don't know is for the past 30 years, having this discussion with other people from Hamilton-Wentoo and the fact that I hate this logo has been like a, just a hobby of mine, because I was like, it's Jerry, like it's still a lousy logo. But I think one thing that bothers me the most, this has to be a community discussion, I'm not saying this, that, you know, I'm not going to make up the mind of anybody. I'm happy to talk about why it's a lousy mascot though, but I do think that we need to be rebranded as a district, right? It's just, it's 2021, it's something that has to happen, right? And there's something to be said where Jerry's, you know, not, he's just not at the forefront, right? He's throwback jerseys, that type of deal. But one thing that needs to happen, and I'm happy to do this with you, Tom, is I know, whether or not people realize it, one reason they hate using this logo without the weapons is because whoever got rid of the weapons just erased the weapons and put them in his underwear.
Yes.
Right? So I am happy to go take the two minutes to fix that and alleviate so much of that problem. And again, we put it on the website, clear as day for people to see, and then it makes it nice and easy for people to grab, and then at least we know we're doing that, right? Our website gets so much traffic that the SCI, right, should push our logos right to the top of any Google image search. So, I mean, it's like, seriously, 10 minutes worth of work and you're taking away half the problem, right? And then we just push that as we like look into like the larger district planning stuff, right? When that all comes out, then we can have that larger conversation, because there is way too many people that love this logo, so, but that's all I got to say.
Julia?
So, yeah, I, I actually want to say something else before I talk about this logo. I am like so embarrassed about the way we treated Everett tonight. I'm like, I'm completely horrified.
I'm like, I'm completely horrified, and I just have to say, like, you would not even allow him to have an introduction, he stands up there, he puts his heart on the line, he's been, I'm just going to try to collect myself. We fawn all over the scholars and the athletes, and we can't even give Everett the proper respect that he deserves for putting together this presentation. They deserve. They deserve. They deserve. They deserve it. I just mean, the way he was treated, I feel like was, I'm just horrified. I'm horrified and embarrassed to be a part of a group that would basically grill him and ask him--
Them.
Questions that he, I don't feel like was--
Them.
What did, what are you saying? I just, I just had to stick up for him.
Everett's preferred pronouns are them, they and them.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. So then, I'm being an asshole, too. Sorry for people at home. But I think that--
Yeah, because there's no bleep on this.
I, I just, I know what it's like to be in like, the social justice club, and I know what it's like to be on the other end, like, advocating for issues that are not popular, that are very controversial. So I just, I don't know, I feel like we should have given him more respect, I don't feel like we should have grilled him, I feel like, I felt like he was being attacked, and that's just how I feel, so I had to say it. I'm sorry that I lost my composure, I also can't breathe in this mask, so I'm sorry, that's all I wanted to say.
Do you want a second opportunity to say something about the logo in a minute?
I hate it.
I care.
I hate it, and, but I'm not from Hamilton, so, I guess, I'm from Beverly.
Is that why you hate it? Okay.
What I would say, it's totally outdated, time for a rebranding. I don't think it's the most pressing issue of the day, but I'm on board with a rebranding. And I'm sorry that I cried at a school committee meeting. I said I wouldn't, I thought, I said in my head, "I'm not going to do it."
Julia, it's completely fine, it means that you have passion, and that you care, and it's completely fine. Peter?
Do you have something pressing?
I have something else to say, but go ahead.
No, I just wanted about, about the logo, I agree with everything Anna says, her evaluation of the logo, I also agree with everything Michelle says, that this should be a community-wide discussion. I also believe we can do this and be respectful to our veterans. David made a, sent a powerful email out showing other, you know, we're a $35 million brand, and we should have a logo that reflects it, and he showed examples of other schools, and juxtaposed it next to ours, and ours is cartoonish. It's outdated. I do believe we can involve the community, get the community buy-in, and be respectful to veterans, and make it 21st century, gender-neutral, gender-free. I always just, I just think it's cartoonish and outdated, and, you know, when we look, we have two, over 230 generals in the US military, a more, a third of them are females, generals and admirals, so it should be up to date. We don't have to lose the word "general," because, you know, that's gender-neutral, we can be respectful to our veterans and lose the, lose the single sex, yeah.
No, I think that's something I want to be really clear, doesn't get misconstrued. I am in no way proposing that we cease to be the Hamilton Wenham generals. Full stop. Generals are great. It's that particular logo, and I do, I do feel like, as much as, so I think everything that has been said is true. However, I also think that as we become a forward-thinking district, this is why I wanted to introduce it now, as we start to think about who we are, there's been a lot of talk tonight about the future, the vision, where are we going, where are we going? I think that we have to focus on that part of it, and I'm not, I am not making a complete decision, I'm simply saying we need to talk about it, I agree completely, the community has to weigh in. But at some point, I think it's okay for us to say, "You know what, that logo was born of a different time, and we have become a different society, and that's okay if we evolve with that." I also want to take just a point to say, even if we weren't born here, we didn't go to school here, we didn't have kids here, we're all here now, and we all have an equal voice. So I feel like that's actually kind of important, that, no, I didn't graduate from Hamilton Wenham, but I'm, I bleed blue and white now, I'm all in, you know, we're all in it together. So I think that every voice needs to be valid in every perspective, and for all the people that love Jerry the General, I've also heard from people who not only have the sort of feelings they do, they really don't feel like it represents them. They're students, and they don't have any attachment, and in some cases feel like it negates who they are, which is worrisome if we have any aspect of our district that is actually negating the identity of students in our district, which gets us to the point about neutrality. And Julia, I'm sorry I wasn't clear, I was simply trying to say Everett's pronouns are they and them.
No, I'm--
So, these little things matter, like, we have to, we have to try, and I know that you do.
It was my, it was just my assumption, so.
And I want, you know, I personally appreciate you saying that, because this clearly has been six months in the making, and tonight was the night where Everett finally got to present, and I do, I not only regret the lack of introduction, which I would have liked to give, I would also like to publicly state, we should have moved the agenda up, so that they were ahead of the goals. I feel really bad that we made Everett and their mother wait for our goal discussion, so, again, we need to do better. And I look forward to this conversation as part of the next rounds of who, who is the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District? Like, who are we, and this is part of it.
So prior--
I see each on top.
Prior to the meeting, we received several, several emails that sort of echo some of what was said over here, which is, this isn't really the time to be doing this, because we have apparently, you know, more than four goals for next year. So that's where I would feel on that, and being someone who was in a high school, who was told that they had to change their logo because it violated copyright laws, and we went through a process of deciding if we were going to change our mascot and all of that, and in the end, we didn't, because people had a huge affinity to it, and what we did was change our logo so that we could keep our mascot. You have to understand that there is attachment to things like this, and right now, I don't think the community is in a place to take on controversy about something that could be very, very divisive. So, I don't know how we go about that, but I think as we go through this engagement, we can sort of figure that out. Like, we're going to be talking to a lot of people on this strategic plan, so we'll see what the community has to say. Because at this point, we've only heard from people who say, "Don't change the logo." So. All right.
I hear that like, oh, life.
I'm just saying. Okay, there's nothing under Finance and Operations, but is there anything you wanted to say, Tom? Are, is there anything you had that you wanted to say? There's nothing here, that's why I was just--
No, not necessarily. I get, I'll present to the committee the full inventory and budget associated with changing.
Okay.
That's listed in the exhibit.
See, this is a high need, but I appreciate it. You know, like, I'm rolling out, you know?
Get some stickers and just stick it over the old one. You don't have to replace the sign, just put a sticker on it, with the new label.
Stickers are tacky?
It should be ignored, but it's also not high need, and I don't think anyone's arguing that.
All right. Then, we're on to policy, it's the second reading and vote of a policy on executive sessions. So, it's a second reading. Yep.
So, the first policy back to you again tonight is Executive Sessions BEC. There were no comments coming out of the first reading, so policy has not changed it, it is as presented the first time around.
Does anybody have a question? Why don't we go through the discussion on all three, and then we'll vote in a minute when everybody's here.
Okay. The second one is Community Resources and Speakers, and that is also as originally presented, there have been no changes. The last one is IJOA Field Trips. This is the one that the full committee did send back to policy, and we did discuss it at our last meeting. So, if you look at this new version of IJOA, there are two places where some red appears. One of them is at the top of Page 2. So there was a question about the approval schedule, and whether or not participation in tournaments and competitions needed to have the 30 days. I think Michelle had said, "You don't always have 30 days before that." So what you see at the top of that is that we modified it and made clear that the 30-day requirement does not apply to those types of tournaments, that was one change. The other piece of feedback that the full committee had, we're talking about exceptions to the transportation policy, and wanting to standardize it a little bit with what goes on with the sports teams. So, the very bottom of Page 2, you'll notice just a small typo, we corrected automobile singular to automobiles plural, because it made more sense. And then at the very end of it, we added a new sentence that says, "Rare exceptions for individual students may be granted with the written permission of the appropriate administrator, e.g., athletic director or principal." During our policy meeting, Mary Beth pulled up the sports policy that I believe was in the Athletic Handbook, does that sound right?
Yep.
And so we made sure that this statement might necessitate a little bit of a change to that, but not necessarily, there was still a notion that written permission was necessary, that the administrator needed to approve it, and that it was really for individual students, I think those were the high-level takeaways. So we added that sentence there, and I believe those were the only changes between the first and second readings of this policy.
Is this the last one? Okay. So I do, I still don't believe that this 30-day requirement does not apply. This still reads to me, like, if you're within the 30 days, you don't need to seek approval. Which is, I don't think what you're trying to say. I think what you're trying to say is, if you're within the 30 days, still apply.
Right, we actually talked about that. If you go up to the bottom of Page 1, the very first line says, "All field trips must receive the prior recommendation, the chairperson, and approval." When we talked it out with Dorothy, she felt as though since the beginning of the part about approval says, "Everything must be applied, must be approved, these are subject to the approval of these people, these are subject to the approval of these people," and then the next sentence is about the timeliness of the approval, but she did not read it as negating the need for approval in and of itself, it was a statement about timeliness, not overall necessity.
So I would get, then I would get rid of that sentence, because what it says is, "Final approval should be sought, sought, no less than 30 days prior to the scheduled trip date." Very it.
But I think that, that last slide is just--
Yeah, it's not must.
Not permitting. If you know the, if you go on to a regional, you win a regional, and then two weeks later it's a final, it's out of state, you obviously can't have the 30 day.
Right.
Right? So I, I just think that when, I don't know, maybe it is, you know, when--
Maybe--
Time, I have it in my head, it won't come out of my mouth, you know, when time, like, doesn't allow, or, you know, when the scheduled contest doesn't allow.
Right, yeah, so. It doesn't matter what it says, as long as there's an understanding of what it says, and that's what's the most important thing, and so, is, you know, as long as the people who are running the trips understand what it means, that's fine.
Yeah, I think in the policy meeting, we were pretty clear that what this is saying is that all out-of-state and overnight trips must be approved by the school committee, all field trips must be approved by the high school principal or department person, and they should be approved 30 days in advance, but in those situations in which that is not possible, given tournaments and that type of thing, that 30-day requirement is waived, but the approval is not waived, right?
Yes.
I think that that's the understanding that we left with.
Okay. And then, so David and I, I don't even remember if you were in policy at the time, when we had to do the thing about students in cars? You need to be closer to the mic. So, we had a huge discussion about students being transported in cars.
Because of the bus problem that's happening now.
Because of the bus problems that happen now. So anyways, my whole, when I was bringing this up, it was because of that experience, and the rare exception of an individual student may be granted with the written permission of the appropriate administrator is only part of my problem, I also want to be sure the parent knows. So it's not to me okay for, whatever, Craig to say, "Oh, you're supposed to go to the Rotary Club breakfast today, you can go with Ms. Frost over to the Tea House." The parent should know that that's how that student is getting there. So that's kind of my, what I'm trying to get to here, so I guess if the administrator is under the understanding that they're supposed to get parent approval, that's fine, but somebody somewhere along the line has to get the parent approval, in writing.
Right, well, I think, so we talked about adding a clause at the beginning, "After the use of private vans and automobiles, comma, including parent vehicles," but we decided not to do that, that's, that's not, maybe that's not what you're talking about, you're talking about making sure the parents know. So my reading of all this, and Michelle or Peter, Mary Beth, please jump in, is that the parents are the ones seeking the permission, therefore, they would have to know that their request is made, because the only way that Craig, or the principal, or anyone would give written permission is if the parents are requesting it. So I'm not sure how the parents wouldn't know if the students or parents are the ones making the request.
So, at the time, when we were originally discussing it, it was coaches who were making that decision.
Yeah, I think that this would change that.
So, we just need to be sure that we understand who has the authority to delegate transportation in one of these manners. So that's fine, as long as people understand their responsibility to get parent permission.
I think, we really, we did really discuss this, and I think--
Okay.
Because of the athletic policy, which it protocols, you know, specifically states what you're saying.
Yep.
And this being field trips, it was--
Okay.
You know, a bit more specific to the administrator, whomever it is in charge.
How did we get that? Vaguely recommending, I'm sorry, vaguely reckoning, remembering a situation like this happened, with that two-week notice that we didn't have a regular, like, a meeting, it sort of fell in between two meetings, I'm trying to remember how we figured that out.
We were going to meet at 7:00, but the superintendent was able to give, it was before COVID last year, and I think Julie Kuppenberger was able to give a special--
Yep, we allowed Julie to give the approval.
Yes, we did, we did.
Yeah. That's it. I just want to make--
But that's also where my concern comes--
They're rare, but it happens.
But that's also where my concern around this comes from, because on that specific trip, there were students riding in students' cars out of state. So, at night, so.
So do you feel that this covers it, though?
If, if--
Because we went over it pretty--
We went back and forth a lot, and--
And I think, isn't there, you know, as long as who, everybody, because one of the things that is, when you get to the finance policy, you're going to find that there's this requirement that all of the people who run a club are given sorts of training and stuff, and it's never been clear if that actually happens, so I'm not actually sure if people will know that this is their responsibility if they're delegating, so we just need to be sure that happens, that's all.
Yeah, I got the sense, Mary Beth, I mean, you, we went, I think, my memory is that this policy, written this way, would force Craig to go back and tighten up the sports policy ever so slightly, but in reading them, there was still the provision that if parents wanted to take their students-- But in reading them, there was still the provision that if parents wanted to take their students home, they had to get written, they had to get permission from the athletic director in advance. And it was a case by case basis. I remember asking Michelle Horgan about that. And then there was a written sign out log and whatnot. So in theory, if that's actually happening at the team level, at the athletic director level, and then we have this, and then what we were trying to avoid was writing something here that would contradict all of the sports practice. But Mary Beth, I think you felt, you felt comfortable with.
Yeah. I felt comfortable with that. And what we had also discussed in policy is that if we do a form of adoption of the things that have been voted for next September, then over the summer, early September, I can task our principals, our athletic director with looking at these policies and ensuring that handbooks are aligned with the new policies that have been voted.
Okay. Any questions about any of the other ones? Anybody?
You need a motion?
Yes.
Is the motion going to be for all three?
Why don't we do them with all three?
Anna, help me out. Are these in form?
Yeah. These will be in form. And then at the meeting on the 19th, we're going to do a big bulk, massive approval. So right now, in form would be the right way to do it.
Okay. I move that the Hamilton Wrenham Regional School Committee approve in form the policies presented on the agenda on executive sessions, community resources and speakers, and field trips.
Is there a second?
Should we say sections BEC, IJOB, and IJOA? Does that help?
Yes. Thank you.
Can you put that in the motion, Mahela, when you write the minutes? Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Great. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? No need to call for opposed. The vote was unanimous.
Anna, just thank you, Michelle.
It's a lot.
Really going through all of this. And having been on the policy committee before, I know how fateful and tedious a job it is.
It is bad. Okay. All right. So.
Just falling apart. I'm falling apart.
For the open meeting law, we are supposed to periodically review our minutes in executive session to see if any of them can be released. So we have reviewed the minutes. The minutes have gone to our lawyer to see which ones need to be redacted. We will be getting you those. Whatever, the redacted ones. I mean, you have access to the full story, but we're going to show you what the public can see. And then we'll vote that as our periodic review at the next meeting.
Can I just add?
Yep.
So my, I believe these, the minutes that you'll be seeing are actually the minutes that you guys have already approved for accuracy. This will be, the question when we bring them to you will be for release to the public so that now that they've been redacted. And.
So, you know, they'll look like, you know, an FBI file or something like that. So the next thing is, in the reading of the minutes, Naomi recommended that we take open meeting law training just to refresh ourselves around the purposes for executive sessions and just that stuff in general. So we can discuss, do you want to do that individually, meaning, you know, go and sign up for a webinar?
Can I just say, if we're going to do it, I want someone here that can actually answer questions because the generic training doesn't get in, like the email I sent you today, right? Like, you know, I'm like, hey, I really still think that, you know, in the minutes.
And I didn't get a chance to read all of that. So yeah.
It was just that like, you know, we had a disagreement about whether or not something was an OML violation. I still think that it was pertinent to the overall discussion, even though it wasn't like, it's a pretty specific question that you're not going to get from watching a 45 minute video.
Right.
You know? And that's the real, that's the stuff that we need more help with, right? It's not the general stuff. We get, we get the general stuff. It's those sort of one off instances, right? That like, okay, are we, you know, crossing the line here? Okay. We'll move back then.
Yeah. So I know that the town recently offered something like that. So I can see, but I think they were using themselves as experts, like so.
See what I argue whether or not it was right or not.
So, you know, so I don't, so we could ask.
We can ask Dorothy.
Dorothy? Yeah.
Or, that's a good idea. Or Naomi. I mean.
Well, I'll just say Naomi's done open meeting law training for us before.
Can I ask a question about what she, what she gave us?
Yep.
Was there some, were there, was she concerned about specific instances? And, I mean, I think it would be helpful for me to understand the specific instances that she is concerned about and why. Although I will say, I feel like when we go to executive session, like it's not, we never really debate the reason or purpose. Like, I often feel like I'm, I'm sort of trusting blindly that we're going into it for the right reasons stated. So I, it would be helpful for me to understand which example she's concerned about and why as a teachable.
I think we have that.
Yeah. I don't know what the best method is, whether you want me to speak to it or is there a way to share her? I'm happy to, I'm speaking as the secretary.
I think you can.
Would you like me to share? So, and I don't know whether it would be appropriate at some point. I guess I could share the documents with her comments with all of you. Necessarily, they can't be put onto the exhibit because her comments are about executive session minutes. But I will say, they were off, they were, she was looking at several, you know, several different executive sessions and they were questions about, sometimes, sometimes it would say that like we were discussing something that was appropriate for executive session, but we weren't in the appropriate reason for the executive session. So like, sometimes we would have called executive session under, you know, there's 10 particular numbers. So maybe she would say, this is actually number two, when you've said it's number three. There were some instances, there were, there really, I mean, other people that saw it, I don't know if you saw it, that there were some instances of very, things that were also discussed in open session. So in other words, like for example, as an example, there was a conversation regarding scheduling that really shouldn't take place in executive session because that can be handled in open session. In that instance, we also had the conversation in open session. But, you know, she's really doing a careful, thoughtful job and really outlining. And then there were other instances, so those are the, there were kinds of things. And then there were some things that she sort of highlighted, but I'm hard pressed to say like this, you know, this could have been an open session. I don't know. Did that, you feel like I captured it?
So how do people like us who, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I'm not at the level of detail that you guys have that information. How does the committee as a whole know as much as you guys know?
Oh, I think I can share with the committee the comments that Naomi made. And I, in all honesty, what she said to me was, I'm going to, don't do anything. I'm going to send you a letter. And so that's why I sort of just waited. So at this point, I, when we, I mean, certainly when we have the, I mean, it would be appropriate when we have the exhibits to, I can share them with you. So that, it's a learning tool, right? That we can all learn to make sure that we're, you know, doing the, I just think we need to, she's really just saying we need to tighten things up and make sure that everything that we talk about is under the correct category and, but yeah, I think.
And that we stay focused. That was her big.
Yeah. Would that feel good if we shared that before we, before we reprove them?
Yeah. We need to anyway, right?
We need to anyway, but I mean, hers are sort of comments, right? They're not necess, they're not, her comments wouldn't be part of what was released, eventually released. But, you know, you could look at the comments and sort of see whether, and in one case, for example, she asked me, I know exactly, the question was, like she highlighted a paragraph and she said, did everything here relate to collective bargaining? And I said, yes. So it was, like, but she wasn't, she's doing a very careful job.
Part of, yeah. Part of the problem is since executive session minutes are written pretty vaguely, it doesn't give the full context. So she had a question on what, you know, like what the context was behind it. Because I, I know the, you know, what Michelle and I were just sort of discussing, which I'm happy to fill you in on a little bit further, but like the, you know, it just said like there was a disagreement, I think she put, Mahela put like there was a disagreement surrounding such and such. And like really gave no context to what it was, just that there was a disagreement in that, you know, Michelle didn't feel like it was appropriate to be saying there. So it just, you know, automatically flagged to Naomi that, all right, we got to watch this. So.
And I just want to say, I think it's, I actually think it's terrific that we're having this conversation in open session as it should be. And I will share the, you know, the documents so you can see Naomi's in her comments in real time or in, you know, they're, you know, it's a Google Doc where she's got the comments. So.
Yeah. I mean, so, right, because right now, everything you're saying, it sounds lovely, but it's still at such a level of cryptic that for me to understand, like my takeaway is like, oh, we have to tighten that up. But for me, and maybe it's because I am newer and I know, you know, Jen is coming on and Julia's, there's a lot of new here. It would be really helpful to break down an example that she cited as a teachable moment because right now it's sort of like, I hear we have a little bit of a problem, but I can't really tell you what the problem is, but we have a problem, but it's not that big of it. Like, I'm like.
So, because I, so I feel like you're saying that I didn't answer your question. So tell me what I could, because I feel like I tried to, I'm going to share the documents.
Maybe, maybe it was just whenever, whenever the next level of detail comes out, that would be very helpful for me because I think I need an example more so than what you're saying right now. I need an example.
Are you?
Okay. Not right this minute, but like I, that would help, that would help me understand what we're talking about.
I think she says she wants to see the documents, which is our plan. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to share them.
Okay.
All right. And then late breaking news. So Joe had invited me to go to a meeting that was going to be this like kickoff of their master plan. And then, so I thought it was going to go to get information. But then it's, that's not what it is. It's like the kickoff of the group. And so they would like for the school committee to offer up as tribute a member to be on their master plan. So, committee. So I personally feel like that should be a Hamilton person, which, you know, takes me out of the list. So I didn't know if somebody wanted to be on the master plan steering committee. And we're supposed to turn this in. Other people on the committee are, well, it looks like planning board and the, what do they call that? The Hamilton Development Corp. and people like that. Because those are the names that are also on here. You're interested?
I am very interested in doing it.
Hi.
I am also interested.
Dana's also interested. Wow, two people. That's awesome. It's like, this is a.
Not it.
Okay.
I am not interested.
Okay. All right. All right. So there are two people who are interested. Okay. All right. Well, why don't we vote on that? Like Anna, why don't you tell us why you want to be on this committee?
Sure. So I, I think I mentioned this early in the year when there was, I think there was an email back and forth when they were talking about getting this going and needing school participation. So for me, my interest is, I've long felt as though the school district in terms of master planning, facilities use, land use, space issue, like the schools are such a huge part of the overall town revenue stream and budget and all of it. And I think it's crucial that one of us is there to really sort of have an eye on what Hamilton is doing in a master planning sense, understanding that the school and properties are a major source of town owned property, really. And so, you know, I think most people know, but I'll state it explicitly, like I am, I, part of the reason I ran for school committee, I'm going to take a nod from Peter, part of the reason I ran for school committee was to sort of look holistically at how the district relates to the towns. How do the towns' properties relate to each other? So for me, this is right in the area of interest I have in terms of space and smart growth and the interrelationship between revenue and land use and what we're doing. So I, I feel very strongly about wanting to have a role in the master planning process in the town of Hamilton as a school committee member and as a town of Hamilton resident. And I mean, I've been wanting, I've been wanting to take part in master planning in Hamilton since we moved to Hamilton and realized that there were these structural issues. I'm really interested in being part of the structural solution to those problems.
Dana, why would you want to be on that?
Wow. Okay. Well, always difficult to follow, Anna. So. So, you know, my interest is, is actually a two way street. I, I feel really confident that I can bring the hat of the school committee and be fully in that mindset on this. I'm willing to do that is to be there in the mindset of the school committee and bring that perspective to the master planning, which I think is hugely important. I also really like, love that kind of thing, like really creating a vision and planning for it. But I guess the other thing is I think it would be a two way street. I see that there would be a lot of benefit, I believe, for me that I could bring back to the school committee, building those relationships, really getting to know all of the various players in Hamilton. I feel like that that will really benefit me myself as a school committee member and hopefully benefit the committee, whoever's on the committee. I think it would benefit the committee, I think it's both ways. And to Anna's statement, it is critical that a school committee member be actively involved. In fact, on the little blurb on the website, one of the first things it says is, why did you move to Hamilton Wrenham? And we all know the answer to that question. So.
I moved here for the trash collection, just for the record.
I was like, it was the train station. All right. So why don't we vote on, we'll vote. Who would like for Anna to serve on the master plan in Hamilton?
I mean, I don't care. I want the vote.
I don't want.
I don't think they'll take two. Okay. And who would like Dana?
I'd actually take a vote for Joe.
I'd like Dana to serve.
And Peter's abstaining.
And Peter's abstaining. So that's a three to three vote. So.
You know what? I should have voted for Peter.
Rock, paper, scissors.
I don't think that would have helped if you'd voted for Peter.
Flip a coin?
Flip a coin? Do you want, you need to ask Joe if we can have two?
Yeah. I mean, why don't we have two? Why don't we see if we can have two?
Send it to Joe, right? Because I think they, they wear very different hats around the town too. So they could actually contribute in multiple ways.
I will tell Joe.
I am very comfortable with both representing.
Both Katniss and, I can't remember her sister's name, are coming. Okay. And wait, I mean, I think, well, yeah. We'll see what Joe says and we can figure it out. It doesn't, we'll let Joe figure it out.
Doesn't need to be.
All right. So apparently there was a town meeting this weekend.
Yes, there was.
Would you like to tell us about it?
Absolutely. So as folks know, there was a town meeting, both in Hamilton and Wrenham. The end result for the school committee is that both budgets passed town meeting. So that, and you know, that was something that is good news for the districts and for the towns in terms of no override. And I want to let you know kind of where we're going as that vote has been approved. The Cutler principal search, which is going to be the replacement for Jen Clifford as she moves into the elementary director of teaching learning role. That is well on its way tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. We have two candidates engaging in site visits over at Cutler. And on Thursday evening, both candidates will have a meeting with parents through a Zoom. And on Thursday evening, both candidates will have a meeting with parents through a Zoom. And then, one candidate will meet onsite, meeting with, with our leadership team, with our teachers, with myself. They'll have an opportunity to speak to Jen Clifford as the outgoing principal. We will be collecting evaluations as this, these individuals engage. And then, we are continuing to hope that we will have an appointment by Monday. So that process is well on its way. Next, I wanted to share that we know that there's been conversations that, that some teachers have some hesitation about the new model. So myself and Jen are visiting all the elementary schools to talk about the model, to answer questions about the model, make sure that everybody has accurate information about what that's going to look like, and really try to work together, because it's critical that, that we, we all pull together to make this happen. So we're taking the show on the road, visiting schools, talking with faculties to answer questions, talk through concerns, and to ensure that we have a strong launch to the model. Similarly, at the secondary level, myself and Eric Tracy will be visiting the middle school and high school faculties to talk about the shifts that we have in the curriculum coordinators doing supervision evaluation, talking about the new PDC model. So that's upcoming in the next couple of weeks. We've met just this, when, this Monday, continuing to work with our curriculum coordinators, talking about what the new structure is going to look like. We've made, Monday, we made a couple adjustments to the model based on feedback that we heard. And we are posting the new positions that have been created as a result of the shift. Instructional coaches are being, have already gone out, and the other couple of jobs will go out either this week or next week. So we are working to get this up and running. Pre-planning, thought, discussion is going to be critical in terms of making this model work. And I want to let you know that we are, we are, we have started that work and we are moving forward. So that, that's an update regarding where we are with the teaching and learning structure based on the positive outcome of the town vote.
Yep.
Thank you for that. I think, I just want to put in a plug, and it's sort of stating the obvious, but I think the fact that so many teachers need reassurance is something I think it's good to address. But I think we, as a body, have to address the level of public frustration and confusion to some degree, too. And I think we all saw that spill over to the point where the budget almost did fail in Hamilton. It was an incredibly close vote. So as you're launching the restructuring, I might advocate that you also reach out and have some parent reassurance as well to explain, because as you said, you think there's a lot of misinformation or misunderstanding out in the, in the community.
Right.
And clearly, that is true. And clearly, the public is not assured. Not, not everyone, but a significant number of voters don't support this as it's been presented. So I think now that it has passed, I think in terms of sort of healing, like, my takeaway from town meeting was really this thought of, how are we going to heal from this process where there's still so much dissent and dissatisfaction? Whether you agree with it, or think it's justified, or it's understandable, like, suspend judgment of why it's happening, but just address, like, we have a reality where it's like, it's like we've had a bad breakup, and yet we still are in the same circle of friends, you know? There's a lot of parents that are really bothered still. I think outreach on your part to those parents in some sort of listening session or meeting or something where you allow people to really understand, how is this going to affect my first grader, you know, at Cutler, who has been dependent on this reading specialist in this way? I think there's a lot of parents that really still don't understand how it's gonna work, and they're worried about their kids, and they're still, I'm still getting calls of people saying, well, that's it, I'm done, I'm pulling my kids, there's no way my kids, like, the parent dissatisfaction is there. So I think that, I think that that would be an important healing step as you try to launch it, to get more parent understanding and buy-in. I just want to offer that as a, a piece of advice to help move it forward.
Yeah, a couple thoughts on that. One is, next week, I'm actually attending the middle school, high school friends meeting to answer any questions that folks might have. And we'll have a joint elementary meeting, principal coffee, principal superintendent coffee hour with all the elementary group together before the end of the year. So we'll, we'll certainly continue to answer questions, there'll be more conversations about it at the school level. I, I do know that there was a lot of confusion and some, some misinformation that was out there around that, so I, I would agree that it's important to clear that up so that people understand the vision for the model and what they can expect for their students next year. And to understand why we believe that this will provide actually a better level of service for students than was provided in the past.
And to channel David, it's, that's also our responsibility.
Oh, you don't even know what I'm about to say.
Did you? Okay, so you say, you say it better.
I am so disappointed in this board right now. No one got up to speak to support our budget on Saturday. That is your job, right? So I drove from out of state with my family to come down and support our budget, right? You're there, we're there to help the community dispel the truth from rumors, right? And there was a lot of stuff being said and a lot of vitriol being spit that was untrue. And we had the opportunity to go up, defend our budget, being the experts in the room, and we had crickets. There was nothing. To expect the superintendent to do all that? Sure, she's a responsible part of it, but that's part of your job to be here on this board, right? That is your job to get up and defend. It is your job to get out there and make sure people know the truth, right? I can't believe nobody got up to speak. Julie and I already, already spoke about, to this after that, but no one was there supporting, right? This is our budget. This is our budget, right? The fact that we had a budget that wasn't going to raise the levy, to go to an override is incredible, and it almost didn't pass because we couldn't support our own budget. That is why you're here, right? That's why you're here. It's one of the three main reasons why we're here, that budget, right? So I, I just have to put that out there. In a week, we're gonna be voting on a new leader for this board, right? So think about, think about that. Who stepped up to a leadership role when we needed one over the weekend?
Michelle, I'd like to respond to that.
Um, is it going to be factual, or is it to debate what David said?
Hmm, probably both.
Okay, so can we do it after the executive session, when it's just talking to people?
Um.
Because it sounds to me like it's an interpersonal thing.
No, it's a statement about the role of us as individual board members at our voting blocks at town meeting, and I guess.
Yeah, can we talk about it after the executive session, because it's getting late, and I want to be sure we get to that.
Well, I, I think Anna should have a right to respond. I mean, that was basically, I mean, that was a lecture, so I, not that I necessarily disagree or don't agree, I need to formulate my thoughts, but I do think that was kind of a shot across the bow that if we allowed that, we should allow responses to it, but that's what I think.
Which is why I feel like we can talk about it, but I don't think that talking about it and responding in the moment is the right time. And if we give a little bit of space between the comment and the time that we talk about it, we'll have a better deliberation. And we have business to do, and I want to be sure we get to it, because we're getting on 10 o'clock, and I know what needs to happen down here, and it ain't gonna be short.
Right, well, are we gonna have that back in open session, though? I mean, I just, I do take, I see your point, but I think.
All right, let's vote on whether or not we want to have a discussion about the role of the committee at the town meeting. Do, do we want to have a motion on that?
Sure. I move that we designate six minutes to discuss the role of the school committee members at town meetings.
Six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Great, six minutes. So, how many people want to speak on this topic?
I just have a question.
Great, that's two minutes apiece. Go, Anna.
Okay, I appreciate David's comments. My only, I guess, rebuttal is that I think, once it gets to the town meeting, that that's the moment where we, as individuals, have some sort of a voting status. I take a little bit of issue that we have some sort of fealty pledge to support any and all things that come forward. I mean, I, I didn't support the budget, I didn't support it at the committee, I didn't support it at town meeting, but I did nothing to actively hurt it, but I also didn't support it, you're right. Because for me to have supported it would have been a lie to my own position and to my own moral compass. So I think it's a little bit unfair to say I'm somehow they're obligated to basically say things that I didn't actually think were true, and this is where we all have differences of opinion. So I quietly said nothing. I didn't hurt it, but I didn't support it. And I feel like to ask individual members, once it's to the town meeting level, that we sort of have to swear allegiance to something, I can respect not shooting it down, you know? I think it would have been really inappropriate for someone to get up on the committee and trash it publicly at town meeting. I agree with you, that would have been terrible. But that's not what anyone on this committee did, so I just, I don't think it's fair to expect or really demand that we support it, if, me personally, I, I didn't, you know? I was not in support, I had not been, and I don't think that is the role of us to do the marketing at town meeting. Frankly, I think that is Mary Beth's job. She's our professional staff, she's our CEO, she's the superintendent. It's, I think that is her job, and at that point, it's for the public to decide. So I can understand a desire for support if you are in support of it, but if you're not, I don't think it's fair to ask those people who are not in support that they have to essentially contradict their own position on something out of some sort of sense of blithe loyalty to the committee.
Peter?
Oh, um, I want to say, David, I actually agree 100% with what you said, and I heard it. And I had something written, and I hear you now, and in the moment, it felt, I, I'm not even gonna make an excuse, in the moment, it didn't feel like it was going to be the right message and hit, and I didn't stand up, and I am, I feel like you're 100% right that I should have, and I take you and, take your criticism and I accept it. Thank you.
I don't want it to be criticism, I want it to be like.
No, I thought it was constructive criticism, I'm accepting it, thank you.
You're taking down two minutes.
I won't eat all of it, right? And, and, you know, to be, I'm sorry if this sort of came off negative, but it's just like, you know, that we're there, that was a tough fight, shouldn't have.
I also did want to say, both Michelle and Michelle did speak at their respective meetings, so.
I, I will say, too, that I think.
Oh, I think Peter's.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter's turn.
I was looking this way. And only if there's two minutes left.
I withdraw, I yield my minutes.
I just wanted to say, it was brought to my attention today, that what we did last year, we did host meetings with the friends groups. COVID hit, it didn't happen, and this year, it filled it off the radar. So that's all on us, too. So, so it's something to remember for next year.
That is something to remember. And we have a community engagement working group.
Peter, you got two minutes.
Nope, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, great. Next, update on teaching and learning and restructuring, we did that. What about Ezra?
Yeah, just very, very quickly, we actually, I actually talked a little bit about this at town meeting as well. SR2 funds are in, but we are, we had an option of spending them in fiscal year '21 or '22. We are holding those funds to '22 to deal with any COVID-related expenses. We're just not sure what those are gonna be yet, they're not in the operating budget, so that's what's in SR2. We are still awaiting SR3 allocations and kind of the rules for spending. So as, as soon as we get that, we will, we will get you those numbers and the guidelines around that, and come to you with recommendations from the leadership team. But I, I fully anticipated that we would have this number, you know, several weeks ago, but it, they have still not been released from the state, so I, I wanted to give you that update as well.
Vinnie, anything you want to add to that?
I don't know, I think you got it, covered him.
Okay.
Um, I don't, other than negotiations, I don't think any of these subcommittees have met since the last time, so.
Yeah, we're gonna update, we're gonna update you on negotiations in executive session. In open session, we can just say, our next meeting is on the 17th, tentatively.
Right.
And only tentatively due to, there's potentially some scheduling issues, but, yeah, I think that's all I have.
Yeah.
And we met yesterday. Was that yesterday?
Yeah.
Yesterday.
Oh, was that just yesterday?
Was that only yesterday?
And I can say that the Capitol Planning Finance Committee will be meeting on the 10th at 4:00, and then.
Policy is on the 20th.
Oh, yeah, and then also at 7:00 PM on the 10th, there'll be the TERF committee steering, the TERF steering committee meeting. So things are moving forward.
Is there someone on our committee on that? I can't remember.
Me.
Okay, great, super.
I know what it is.
You can report back later, great, okay. There are several items on the consent agenda, including the warrants, the minutes of April 7th and April 14th, and donations from the Friends of Winthrop Brickend Farm and Hamilton-Wentham Little League. Would anybody like to pull those off?
I would like to hold the minutes from the 14th.
Okay.
I'd like to hold all the donations, please.
Thank you. Perfect, great.
You can hold whatever you want.
I know, it's whatever. It's, it's tradition. I can't sing, so I won't sing it for you. Okay, go ahead, make.
I move that the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee approve the consent agenda with the exception of the minutes from April 14th and the donations as listed on the agenda.
Is there a second?
And no changes shall be made.
Yeah, those are the things we're pulling.
I second the motion.
Second by Anna. There can be no discussion, so all in favor? Great, that passes. Minutes of April 14th, Anna.
So I just have a very minor factual correction. At the beginning, it said, "All members in attendance rose for the pledge of allegiance." That is not true. I would like to amend the record to show that I did not stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Mahela will make that note, and then you can forward approved minutes.
Yeah, so then, I can ask Mahela, and then do I just bring them back to the next meeting for approval, is that?
No, let's just approve them as amended.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you need a motion for that?
Yep.
I move that we approve the minutes for April 14th, 2021, with the, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Anything else? Great, all in favor? That's unanimous, so there are no, no votes. We have several donations. One, from the Friends of Winthrop for playground toys, you know, during COVID and stuff, you can't share stuff. And also, we were out of school for a long time, so a lot of playground equipment was missing, so the Friends of Winthrop has provided some of that. Brickend Farms has provided some compost to sort of spruce up the outside of Winthrop, right? Outside of Winthrop. And the Hamilton-Wentham Little League provided clay and some services, and, was that only at Cutler, or was it also at the middle school?
At Cutler and the middle school.
At Cutler and the middle school. So we are very grateful for that. We couldn't provide these things on our own, and this clearly improves the quality of We couldn't provide these things on our own, and this clearly improves the quality of joy at the schools for the children, so... Shall we accept them?
Thank you.
Thank you. I move that we accept the donations from the Friends of Winthrop for the playground toys for $1,500, the Brickend Farms compost for $175, and the Hamilton Wyndham Little League services and goods for $22,000.
Is there a second on those?
A second?
Ooh, I got to go with Anna on that one. Anna seconded. All those in favor? That is unanimous. No need to determine the no votes. Topics for future meetings. We just had something that I said, could you write that down? The work plan? I can go back and look at it, but it was early on. Did I write it down? Oh, discussion about the vacation day in April.
Yes, let me add that into our work plan. I will do that.
Yeah.
Um, I think you mean the calendar vote, right, Michelle?
Yes, and the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we voted the one part, so that's the, that's the part.
Yep.
Yep.
Is it, so I think this is probably in the works. I'm not concerned about when it needs to be, but, and I, I'm hoping not to also break into tears because that was, I'm not going to say, that was really hard to hear because I really felt like I appreciated Everett's presentation, and I asked questions because I thought of them as a professional adult giving a presentation, and that was my, I thought that they presented themselves that way, and so, anyway, I'm sorry, that's beside the point, but I do want to make sure that at some point, maybe it's part of the DEI discussion, but I do think we want to come back and have a discussion about the land acknowledgement. I don't, I don't feel like that has to be on the next week, but I don't, so I don't know how to phrase that exactly, but...
Yeah, so we should put that, like, on a June thing. Oh, and that's something else we have to talk about, is the meeting in June for the workshop.
Do you want me to put that on the next agenda?
Yeah, so just as an FYI, the, there's supposed to be a meeting on the last day of school, and we just, we're like, that's probably not a good time to do that. And I think we talked about this at the last meeting, so just...
We did.
An FYI. Okay, Anna?
Peter just drew my attention, and it's all in our email now. And since it's obviously going to be a topic of conversation, apparently during our meeting today, I'm assuming in response to the presentation about Indigenous land acknowledgement, based on the comments and based on the presenter, there are a number of students in our district who feel like it's appropriate to offer homophobic, violent, racial, intolerant slurs. It is all in the email that the school committee has just received. I cannot beg the district and the committee enough to address diversity, equity, inclusion, and discuss the climate and culture of our schools that leads to this happening. I am, I share Julie's horror, this... I hate crying, first of all. It takes a lot to make me cry. This is unacceptable behavior, and I am going to be the first person, and I'm thankful for Peter for checking his email during the meeting. The chat that was going on in the Hamilton Wyndham cam, live chat, is unacceptable, deplorable, and I hereby condemn it, and I expect a full response from the superintendent, from Principal Tracy. The students are named, there are screenshots. This is unacceptable behavior, and I will not let this go unattended. There has to be some sort of action, and we cannot let this stand in our community. Full stop.
I'm also concerned that there's threats of weapons in there and body counts.
What are, what are, what are we looking at? So I think, can we just say...
Comments on HW cam?
Can we just, I need to think about this quickly. Let me think about this.
I wouldn't even say anything until you look at that email.
Yeah. What I would say is, we will look at this email and address it appropriately.
Great, perfect. I also would like to say I'm a teeny bit concerned that people are checking their email during a meeting because there could be communications going on in there that are not...
My emails are not...
Whatever. I'm just not...
In this case, I'm glad that Peter did. Thank you, Peter.
One more. Fire email. Peter, you're fired.
Yeah, thank you.
This, one thing that I want to bring up, that, I had actually mentioned it in the email earlier, but I'd like to move the consent agenda back to the top of the meeting, and I actually just had a really good reason why, is the fact that since we do keep separating those donations, we should be putting it right up front when actually everybody's here to hear them, to hear how much stuff we're getting done. Like, it really just clicked right there.
Yeah, it's in the policy, and I don't remember what the order is.
It used to be. We used to start with the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll look, I'll look at it.
And I would like to, I don't know if it's move or what, but anytime there are citizens or students here, they need to go first.
Mm-hmm.
So, like, full stop. That needs to be a policy.
We can do that, but if you ever feel that way during a meeting, just feel free to bring it up at the beginning.
Right, I did, and I didn't say anything, but...
No, that's absolute, and I have no problem butting in and saying that most of the time, so, yeah.
I don't mean to be contentious, but we did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago where I actually did move to push somebody up, and it didn't happen, so I do, and I'm not even unfortunately remembering the whole, because, you know, but, I do think...
We're working progress.
Did we vote on it?
I don't know.
Okay.
I just say, we currently do not have any students scheduled for the next meeting. The 6-2 meeting, we do have a recognition of retiring staff, so I would anticipate that we'll have that group up early.
Yep, sounds good. Okay, so let's, so I feel like we should make a motion to go into executive session, but I think we should say that we'll return to open session just in case we need any sort of discussion about anything else that's transpired. Do you feel like that might be possible? I don't know what we're talking about because I'm not reading my email.
I doubt it.
Okay, so let's, let's not, let's not come back into open session if we need to talk.
Wait, can I, because I think, is it possible that might, this might help both, that might help, is when we move into executive session, would it be helpful to do purpose number three, but also maybe purpose number seven, which I believe...
Yeah, let's do seven for security.
Right, which is, and then we could, if we had executive session minutes to discuss, we could discuss them?
Yep.
Does that solve the problem, you think?
Are we doing seven for, to comply with another law? Or are we doing seven to talk about security?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we...
I don't know what the numbers are. Oh, but you know what? The numbers are in the policy. The numbers are in the policy that we just approved. Let me find the numbers.
Right.
Okay. Do you want to...
Well, I guess, number seven, I believe, is security, which is potentially a topic that could come up due to...
Yeah, security is a different one.
Oh, I thought that was, I thought they were the same.
I thought it was going to say... Four.
Because they were the same.
Four. You know what? We're going into executive session now, and we're going to discuss the negotiation strategy with the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee, the Hamilton Wyndham Education Association. We also may potentially discuss the deployment of security personnel and devices, and we may also talk about executive session minutes, in which case we will need to meet, we will need to meet under number seven to comply with the open meeting law. And that specific law is 30A. How's that? And any and all of those things could have detrimental effect on the committee's ability to negotiate. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by David. This is by roll call. Julia?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, yes. Anna?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes, great.
I'm taking this.
Thank, yeah, yeah. Thank you for sticking it out to the end.
Six dollars.
Come back in two weeks. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And thank you for the keys for the 1960s.